There we are. Yeah, we are. We're missing two people today. We're missing Roger Light, who had previous permission. He had a thing he had planned a long time, some mountain climbing thing. And last-minute cancellation was Matt Hensley, who has an emergency sudden flooding in his house. So he cannot make it. He gave me a call right before I came over. So that was sort of a last-minute thing. So I'm going to call this to order. This is the City of Redondo Beach Planning Commission, Thursday, August 17, 2023, and it is 6:30 in the evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Light is absent. Commissioner Boswell?
Here.
Commissioner Goddick?
Here.
Commissioner Hazeltime?
Here.
Commissioner Hensley is absent. Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
And Chair Garris.
Here. All right. Let's have a salute to the flag, and I'd like Commissioner Hazeltime to lead us. Thank you. All right. I'd like a motion for approval of the Order of Agenda.
Motion to approve the Order of Agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Say no. Passes unanimously. So the Order of Agenda, are there, were there any changes that you wanted? There wasn't. Yeah, we don't worry. All right. Blue folder items, you know, I didn't check email for the last hour before coming over. Do we have any?
No. No blue folder.
No blue folder items. All right. All right. So consent calendar, consent calendar business items, except those formally noticed for public hearing, or those pulled for discussion by one of the commissioners, are assigned to the consent calendar. Commission members may request that any consent calendar item be removed, discussed, and acted upon separately. Items removed from the consent calendar will be taken up under the excluded consent calendar section. Those items remaining on the consent calendar will be approved in one motion. I will call on anyone wishing to address the commission on any consent calendar item on the agenda, which has not been pulled by the commission for discussion. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once, and comments will be limited to a total of three minutes. Does anybody have any consent calendar item they want discussed? Anybody online?
We do have a couple people online. If you wish to speak to the consent calendar, please raise your hand. Looks like we do go ahead and vote.
Any of the commissioners want to pull a consent calendar item? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Passes unanimously. All right. Our next section is public participation in non-agenda items. This is intended to provide members of the public with the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda for action. The section is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the commission. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once, and written requests, if any, will be considered first under this section. Do we have any written or online non-agenda public participation?
Do you have an attendee online who just put their hand up? Ms. Holly Osborne, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I think I am unmuted.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We hear you, Holly.
Okay. Listen, I've been bugged about this for two years, okay? When you, and it has to do with how you get your Zoom link. If you have city council agendas, all you have to do is hover your little hand over the part that says register for Zoom, and the link just pops up, okay? That's for city council. But for planning commission, you get the agenda, and you hover your hand over, and nothing happens. It wants you to copy every single, you know, about 20-layer address, one by one into a link, okay? How come you guys can't do it the same way as city council? I just don't get it. Has anybody else noticed this? They're so much easier for the city to measure, to register for a city council meeting than register for you guys. I had to write you a special note. Thank you.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. We will, we will direct staff on that. Are there any other comments on?
No one else has raised their hand, and there are no ecomments for non-agenda.
All right. Anyone in the room have a non-agenda item they'd like to comment upon? All right. Thank you. So next section is ex parte communication. This section is intended to allow all the officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure or ex parte communication about tonight's public hearing. Commissioner Boswell?
I spoke to no one, except in the second thing that we're going to do. It's whoever I spoke to before. Nobody knew.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing either, so we don't have to worry about that one.
Right.
Commissioner Goddick?
My name.
All right. Commissioner Hazeltime?
Commissioner Lamb?
Commissioner Lamb?
Commissioner Hazeltime.
All right.
And, and as staff member Stacy, Stacy Kinsella.
All right. I have, I have, the mayor is the only one I've spoke with at these items. All right. So shall we open the public hearing? We ready for that? So this public hearing, and we'll have a vote for, I'll just read it off, and then I'll entertain a motion to open it. Public hearing for the consideration of an exemption declaration, an amendment to a conditional use permit, and a coastal development permit to allow the expansion of an existing veterinary clinic, an animal hospital, within an existing commercial building on property located in a commercial C-2 zone at 701 South Pacific Coast Highway. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing? J. One?
You can open J. One.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against say no. It is passed unanimously. Do we have a staff report?
I guess I'm going to turn it over to our associate planner, Stacy Kinsella.
Right.
Thank you. If you could please share my screen.
Should I swear in our, do we have anyone who's going to speak on this item? All right. Can you, I've got to swear you in. So if you could stand up, put your hand over your heart. Okay. Will you provide testimony with respect to this item? And tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay, we're sworn in.
Excellent. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. The project site is located at the corner of Topaz Street and PCH. The site is zoned C-2 commercial, and it's also located within the coastal zone because it's west of PCH. The properties immediately to the north and south are likewise C-2 commercial. There are retail facilities, salons, offices, and restaurant uses. Properties to the west, immediately behind this facility, are zoned R-2, low-density multifamily residential. And then the properties to the east across PCH are zoned RH1, high-density multifamily residential. Here's just a quick Google view of the site. You can see the Vet Center here. This is actually the building with the two tenant spaces. This is Topaz Street. Here are the R-2 low-density multifamily sites. Along here are the C-2 commercial properties. And then across PCH here, you can see the high-density multifamily residential. Here's the front of the property facing PCH, and here's the site of the property along Topaz. You can see that that site has been vacant for quite some time, at least since January 2021. Here's another side view coming towards the rear along Topaz. You can see this is the rear parking lot. For some reason, there happened to be a guy out in the street making bubbles, so I have the bubble man here in the corner. And because the school district is already in session, there were kids out looking at the bubble man. So there you go. I thought that was great.
Explains a lot.
Building permits were issued for the original commercial building in 1956. The one-story commercial building has two tenant spaces and is a total of 3,700 square feet in size. At the time, they created 10 parking spaces in the rear. The original CUP for the vet clinic was granted in April 1982. The vet clinic space is about 1,805 square feet. The adjacent tenant space at 701 and 1/2 had been a retail bike shop for several years, and that space is 1,865 square feet in size. Dr. Yelenik, who is here this evening, has owned and operated this vet clinic for almost 20 years. The existing clinic, I was lucky enough to get a private tour of the clinic earlier this month. It has three small exam rooms, two small offices, one bathroom for the whole facility, an open area for basic care such as teeth cleanings, nail clippings, and then a small reception desk that's off of PCH, and that's their main entrance right now. Their main hallway lining through the clinic has the lab, the pharmacy, the laundry, the medical supplies, and the storage packed in their shelves, and they have very small desk spaces along that hallway. The goal for the project is to expand that existing vet clinic into both tenant spaces. They would move the entrance from the PCH side to off of the rear of the property directly from the parking area. You'll see in a moment on the site plan, they'll move the ADA parking space directly to the new entrance, so you'll have direct access. Right now, pet owners have to walk from the rear all the way to the front of the building to obtain services. They will create a genuine reception waiting area off of that main entrance. And then some other critical features include creating a separate pharmacy room, a lab space, creating two functional business offices. Then the three exam rooms in the current tenant space would relocate to 701 and 1/2 and be much larger, so you have room for the pet owner, the pet, and the practitioner. They'll have one additional procedures room, and right now, they don't have a staff lounge or any lockers for their staff. They have little drawers for their staff. So they'll actually have a space where you can take a lunch break. They'll put in a second all-gender bathroom, so there'll be two bathrooms available, a separate laundry space, better storage. But again, no new square footage for the facility, and because there won't be another business at that space, you'll no longer have to worry about shared parking. This would all be one cohesive business. They plan to do some very minor exterior cosmetic upgrades, primarily paint, just to make sure that the building all looks cohesive when complete. Here's the site plan. Right now, this is where the ADA parking space is located because the new entrance will be off the back here. The ADA space will shift locations. Here it shows nine parking spaces. So in 1982, with the original CUP, it called out 10 parking spaces, and that's indeed what they had. One space obviously was utilized to create the ADA parking. And then back in this corner, not shown on this drawing, but I observed it when I walked the site. The refuse containers are actually back in the corner, so they impede access. At least you don't have full access to this other space. So they have eight functional parking spaces. I know that one staff member does have a motorcycle that can wedge into that side area. However, that will be part of our discussion further forward. Here's the proposed floor plan. This upper area is the tenant space they are in right now. It's closest to the corner. But you can see they'll have the three exam rooms. They'll move from up in here in this space along this wall here. New procedures room. They'll have genuine offices. Right now, they look like storage rooms wedged with desks, so they'll have genuine offices for their hospital manager and for Dr. Yelenik. Here you can see that waiting room in the back and the reception area, and then the staff lounge, pharmacy, lab. I would like to note that the animals will still be located primarily within this existing suite. These right here are the cages where they keep the animals that are waiting for treatment throughout the day. They do have an existing ward back here. That's where they had been keeping the dogs. I know there was a separate cat space. I think this may still be a cat space. For the sake of discussing noise, I just wanted to point out that the animals might primarily be in this space, except for coming into the exam rooms as needed. These doors and the fenestration will remain along PCH, but just be locked during business hours. And for rooms that need privacy, they'll most likely just put an interior film, privacy film. So the land use remains the same. It was approved back in 1982. It is still approvable within the C-2 zone, so it's an allowable use. No changes to that land use that still meets the general plan, which is consistent with our coastal land use plan. The existing two-way driveway, it's 36 feet in width, is accessible from Topaz Street. That will not change. I talked about the 10 parking spaces. One was utilized for ADA. One has refuse containers, so really you have eight genuine parking spaces. Within the materials you received, I noted that, or excuse me, the applicant noted that they would have a maximum of six employees, which would be one doctor, five support staff, and then up to four to five visitors at a time. I visited the site a couple of times during the day, and really, they're talking about the pickup-drop-off times, right? But during the day, they're just treating the animals, and the parking lot's not utilized practically at all. It's just empty. And that was my August 7th inspection. There was only one doctor, three support staff, and one office manager, so they were able to self-park at that time. Specialists also, they have sometimes cardiology specialists or ultrasound specialists. They only come in as needed, come for that appointment, and then they leave the site. They're not on-site 100% of the time. Again, the animal cages are located towards the middle and north side of that building. And then for odors, they already manage and bag the animal waste indoors, and then they have a medical waste service that comes and retrieves that. And they don't walk the animals around the neighborhoods. They don't exit the facility to do their business. That's all handled indoors. So because this is an intensification of use within the coastal zone, we went through the exercise of bringing coastal development permit forward. There will be no changes to the land use. Again, it is in compliance with the C-2 zoning, and the C-2 zoning is in compliance with the Certified Local Coastal Program. Public access and public recreation really are focused for the area between the sea and the first public road. This property, even though it's west of PCH in the coastal zone, it's about four blocks away from the Esplanade, so it is highly unlikely that it would create issues with public access and public recreation along the coastline. And then also, we have the responsibility to make sure that it complies with the California Environmental Quality Act. This This project is exempt per Section 15301A because it's minor interior alterations of an existing structure. It's not a new development. Even though they're moving into that space, another commercial business would eventually take up that space and add volume to the site. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, and make a determination regarding the exemption declaration, the amendment to the conditional use permit, and the coastal development permit for the proposed expansion of an existing veterinary clinic at 701 South PCH. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to, before asking the applicant to, if they have any comments they'd like to add to that, are there any issues with this thing, with this proposal?
We haven't received any complaints over the years. I can say that.
Any concerns that we should have?
It's a legal non-conforming site. There are no concerns from what we've observed of the business. I've been by the business twice now.
All right.
And just to clarify, it's really not an expansion of the volume of their work. It's creating more space to conduct the work more effectively.
Okay. Okay. Should we take some public comment before, do you think?
Sure.
Yeah, all right. So I have, I have three requests to make comment. First one is from Miranda Tamraka. Is that correct? Could you approach the podium and state your name and whether you're part of the applicant or what?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I'm Miranda Tamraka. I'm the hospital manager at Redondo Shore's Veterinary Center, and I'm accompanied by Dr. Yelenik, our founder and chief of staff. And I wanted to make sure to show up to answer any questions and make sure that everybody had all the information that they needed.
Okay. Thank you. Second one is Dirk Yeleneck.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing us out today. That was a very detailed synopsis. Thank you. I just want to be available to answer any questions you might have. It might be of interest to you that historically back in the 80s, both units in that building were a veterinary hospital. And then it was sold out and it became two different, separate businesses. And when I took over the one side, that was because one of the tenants had left the building. And I've remained in that side all these years. So it's been almost 20 years. And it's a quality of life for our staff and our patients and their clients. And it's our second home, and we appreciate your consideration.
Great. Thank you. Third one is Robert Kobabe. Is that right?
Kobabe.
Kobabe, okay.
Thank you. So hi, my name's Robert Kobabe. I'm a resident at 703 Elvira Avenue, just around the corner.
Okay.
From the site. I find it interesting to know what some has observed from two visits to the site. I've lived there since 1981. My wife has lived on the street since 1963. So we have a different viewpoint of what two visits do versus, feel versus real. The pets, we see people, I don't know if it's the vets, but people in scrubs out walking the dogs outside of their parking lot, leaving waste. I understand they pick it up. But we have a problem with dog urine. Our place is fantastic for walking pets. Not everybody picks up. And even if they pick up, there's a nice smear that is left behind in the parkway. Some of our fellow neighbors are turning their parkway, getting rid of the grass, putting up fences to avoid such incidents as this. I wish I'd taken video so you don't have just my opinion on it. The other thing is that there is, there's no, they can say that they're not going to expand their business. That has, it's irrelevant. There's no guarantee that they won't expand their business by picking up more room. Moving the entrance to Elvira, I'm sorry, to Topaz also makes it more of a welcoming to park on the residential street. The vet has 13 employees, they said that. And then she said, what, five or six are there any one time? But all five or six, except one, are parking on either Topaz or Elvira in the 600 or 700 block. You combine that with the beauty shop that you had listed up there that has zero off-site parking and five employees. You also combine that with the noodle restaurant that's just on the end of the 600 block of Topaz that has eight employees and seven spots. And they have allegedly supposed to limit their seating to 38, according to your rules. And they don't have enough parking. It always comes to us. So between their working hours, it's filled with pet shop owners and such. The rest of it is filled with the restaurant. I wish I had more time than to say it's been an impingement upon the residents. And just because the residents don't speak up or haven't said anything since the 80s doesn't mean that there aren't concerns valid and valid concerns as well. Because if you took a snapshot of the area and you had all the employees tagged, cars tagged of the restaurant and the vet, you would see how much it impacts that area. Thanks for your time.
Motion to extend. You have a second. All those in favor say aye. You've been extended.
I think you get the feel for it, though, is that there is a substantial impingement upon mostly single-family residential area. It was going to go to all multifamily dwellings until my mother-in-law stepped forward and made one of the few R2 places, about the only R2 place west of the highway, Patricia Lamson, rest in peace. So just in her honor, I would like to keep it as a residential area up to, including possibly, if it's available, permitted parking. I know there's limited permitting parking in this city, and you hate to do that. Thanks for the extension.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Anything, anyone online?
You have two attendees on Zoom who have their hand up. Leslie Fleischer, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. Good evening, Redondo Beach Planning Commission members. My name is Leslie Fleischer, and I'm speaking on behalf of my family, the Clayton family. I'm here to address the Vet Clinic expansion. Our family owns 406 Topaz Street. This is two doors down from the clinic. That is approximately 305 feet from our little bungalow. My parents have owned and enjoyed our home for over 50 years. Approximately 20 years ago, the Vet Clinic moved in. They made tasteful improvements to the structure. We love the mural, and we have no issues with the noise. We are sure that the entrance change will also be a great improvement and be safer and less stressful for the animals. However, we do have two issues that have come up and continue to be a problem. And I'm continuing on with what the gentleman before me said. The first issue is that while the clinic does not act as a bona fide kennel, vet staff do use Topaz Street as a dog potty break and walking area. This excessive use of the public green space in front of our house, which we maintain, and our private mini-front yard caused our landscaping to die. My parents had several conversations with Dr. Yelenik. He said he would address it with staff and make changes. We didn't really realize that they weren't even allowed to be doing that, to be honest. My dad tried to deal with it himself. The behavior never changed, so my parents took the path of least resistance. They gave up on the lawn and put bark nuggets. While our house's yard is not as attractive as it used to be, we no longer have the added expense and time of constantly reseeding and planting. I just wanted you to know that this practice is still going on. The second issue is that while they have a parking lot, none of the employees are parking in it. The eight or 10 spaces in front of the four closest homes on Topaz Street are constantly full from the Vet Clinic employees. This is making it difficult to access our house, and it did not use, used to be this way. Yet, when I pass by the clinic lot during business hours, there are usually one or two cars. Even the Redondo Beach staff inspector noticed a similar observation. I was going to quote it, but I don't need to now. As I reviewed the documents submitted, I noticed that the number of parking spaces were increasing. There wasn't any mention of staff parking in them. I spoke with the clinic's office manager who said that they were leaving the parking designation to the Planning Commission to decide if the employees should have to park in their lot. So Planning Commission members, with the increase in clinic square footage, increase in parking spaces, and no increase in staff, it just seems logical, as well as being a good neighbor, that some of the parking should be assigned to staff, especially when current parking seems to be readily available. In addition, I hope that the Vet Clinic would be considerate and ask the remaining vet staff to park on the north side of Topaz. Again, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Yes, we have one more. Nile Saunders, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies for not being there in person. I am actually Dr. Yelenik's architect. So I'm joining the meeting remotely. And obviously, there are some issues here which go beyond the architect's remit. I will, however, say this much, that the existing empty suite next door does have the option of being used for many different uses. It could be a cafe. It could be a retail store. It could be a lot of things. And I do think that, you know, Dr. Yelenik, by taking over that suite, is helping the neighborhood by closing off the possibility of a much more intensive use of this site and consequently, the parking in and around the site. We've discussed internally the possibilities of starting a rideshare program with his staff wherein a few of the parking spaces that are now freed up for his exclusive use can be designated as staff parking spots. We've already heard that one staff member used a motorcycle, which is great. And if we had a couple of others, we could definitely take some staff members off the street and still have plenty of parking. So I think really, Dr. Yelenik's always expressed to me that they want to be a good neighbor. They want to try and help the local residents as much as they can. I can't really speak to the idea of, you know, walking pets around the neighborhood. I'm sure a lot of that takes place by, you know, the general populace too. But as far as parking is concerned, I think we're doing the best here, we can here by allowing this, let's call it an expansion of the facility into the open suite. We're not intending to intensify the business itself, but it's going to be definitely more comfortable. As you noted, the facility has been in existence for many years, providing excellent services to the community for their pets. I do know that Dr. Yelenik wants to continue to do that, to improve his services in the interests of being a good neighbor. If we can bring a few of the staff members off the street onto the site, as the previous commenter, the lady previously said, that would be great. I think that will help the neighborhood. What we can't do is we can't leave that suite next door permanently empty. I think if Dr. Yelenik doesn't take it, it's probably going to be used.
Motion to extend.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say no. Okay, you're extended 30 seconds.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. But if you have any questions that I can answer as architect, please do let me know. I'm here, ready to answer alongside Dr. Yelenik. Thank you.
All right, any other, thank you. Any other?
No one else has their hand raised on Zoom, but for the record, there is one e-comment related to this item.
Could you read it?
Sure. My name is Tom Bauer, and I am the current chair of the Harbor Commission. Thank you, commissioners, for all you do. I generally support the agenda item to allow the veterinary clinic to expand. But one issue I have noticed is that the current pedestrian flow for this business is from the back parking lot. While this is convenient, the clinic seems to mostly ignore the front of their business, the storefront that faces Pacific Coast Highway. This area often looks abandoned with trash and dog urine left behind on the sidewalk. It doesn't help having a vacant business next door, which I realize will be fixed with this expansion. I support this amendment, but would encourage the business to commit to keeping the storefront nicer with daily cleanings. I realize trash is sometimes left by homeless people, and it does take extra effort. But the daily attention to this area would go a long way to making the small area of Redondo look more classy. Thank you for your time.
All right, any other comments from anyone who's present here? All right, all right. Questions from the commissioners? All right, Commissioner Boswell. Oh, actually, her hand was up first. So Commissioner Lamb, sorry.
A couple of things. One, just explanatory statement here. In order to amend and approve the above, the conditional use permit, the coastal land use plan permit, or the coastal permit, and the exemption declaration, the Planning Commission must find evidence that the new expansion conforms with the general plan and the coastal land use plan. If the Planning Commission finds evidence that there's conformity, the members may approve both permits. If there is not conformity, the Planning Commission will make further recommendations. Just to set the stage here for everyone here and for those that are watching. So there's lots of evidence that there's conformity. Our staff has explained. However, there's a piece that I think needs to be explored, and that is that this property is in the coastal zone. And the coastal zone has particular parking requirements. And I'm wondering if Assistant Planner Cincella could explain what the coastal zone parking requirements are and how they dovetail or don't with the fact that there is an existing CUP, there's a possibly grandfathering in. What does, if you could explain that for us?
Of course. So firstly, the land use, the Vet Clinic, it mirrors the parking count that's utilized by the inland ordinance, which is one parking space for every 250 square feet. It's under that catchall of commercial uses not listed. That's what we've been utilizing for Vet Clinics. So the parking count mirrors what we have for the inland properties. This is a legal non-conforming site. It was built and approved to have the Vet Clinic with 10 parking spaces. As it relates to the coastal zone, the public access and public recreation that primarily focuses along the coastline. Will this expansion, will these business activities somehow impede access to the coastline, the use of the ocean, the use of the recreational facilities along the beaches? Because this isn't located immediately adjacent to the beach or that first public road, this is about four blocks in from there, immediately adjacent to PCH, we do not see that this would impede access to the beach, the beach facilities, all of those offerings. If there's anything else that Director Forbes would like to add?
Yeah, I'd also like to add, our local coastal plan implementing ordinance, the zoning for the coastal, also does allow for the existing non-conforming to continue. So that is the point that's here. So it's, you know, it would be in compliance with that because that is our implementing ordinance. The Coastal Commission has approved that implementing ordinance and finds that that's acceptable. With that, I do want to point out, so that, you know, that there are the 10 originally approved parking spaces, and one was spaces, and one was converted to, for the handicap, the ADA accessibility. Our code also allows for that, so that you wouldn't have to replace that parking space that brings it into the ADA conformity. So the nine spaces meets that. It's that one space where there's the refuse that might be taking up that space that is kind of that one in question of how it's not meeting that, what was approved as an existing legal non-conforming structure.
Okay. Do I still have time?
You have time.
For the applicant question, if you would mind stepping forward? Either one of you, it's fine. One refu, so as you've heard, there's some issues related to parking, right, with the residents. Is there an opportunity for the waste bins to be, now that you're having the whole property, is there an opportunity for those waste bins to be located in a place that are not encumbering a parking space?
Yes, previously, the waste bins were at the middle of the fence in the parking lot. The company that takes care of the waste damaged the fence with the bins, so we moved the bins to the back of the parking lot, where we seem to think it's a safer place for the bins to be. But if we need to move them back, we can. There's also a fence between the two properties, the adjacent property and my property, that I put up 20 years ago, because that business was having their customers and employees drive around Topaz through my parking lot into their parking lot. So that fence could actually be removed, and I think might potentially free up another space.
Okay, so there are some options here.
That's the hair salon?
I'm sorry?
Is that the hair salon parking?
No, next door to me was another business. I can't, I don't know exactly what they did over there, but that's recently been sold. So there's a new business coming in there, and that fence could come down, but for safety reasons, I put that up so that people wouldn't drive through our parking lot, because we have people coming out of cars with the animals and children.
Right.
And we feel it's best for our clients to park in our parking lot for that reason as well, for the animals and the children.
So I'm hearing potentially two parking spaces. One, if you move the bins, and another on the, I think you're talking, I believe you're talking about the south? Are you talking about the south side?
Yeah.
Right. I am actually familiar with your animal hospital. So could those also be reserved for staff?
I think that there's a lot of different opportunities that we have to address the staff parking issues, and we had discussed the possibility of a ride-share or a public transportation incentive for our staff, and that is something that we can certainly explore. And having staff in the parking lot is not out of the question at all, and we could look at that fence option and measure out and see if we could get a conforming parking space in there, an additional one. But we're certainly open to addressing the parking concerns, because we've coexisted really peacefully with the neighborhood for so long, and we definitely want to do our part to continue that responsibly.
Right. You also have parking in the, on the north side and on PCH.
The parking on PCH is two-hour parking.
But that would be adequate for a, for a visitor.
For a visitor, certainly, certainly, yeah.
Right? And on the, on the north side?
They couldn't park right in front of them, but.
Could they park right in front of them?
PCH is a red curb right in front of there, or is it not?
There's a red curb right in front of our door.
Okay.
Yeah.
As you go further down, it looks okay. Lots of street.
Oh, I see. I see why that's the case.
In reference to the parking, there's staff parking and there's client parking. And we feel that clients having to park on the street is not safe for the clients or their pets, to get them in and out of the car. There could be an abandoned, a fleeing pet. It's just safer that they park in our parking lot.
I see, I see. Oh, I see, that's why the two-hour, the two-hour minimum, maximum is problematical.
It's, yeah, it's also less desirable, because we do have just that traffic moving down PCH as fast and it's loud.
I see. I think I am out of time. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Boswell?
I think I, didn't I just give Doctor, Commissioner Doctor? My time? Okay. So I guess there appears to be a couple of issues, and parking and pet waste being the two main ones that people have brought up. In regards to the parking, from what I'm gathering from the conversation here is that the parking lot is the ideal place for the customers, for the clients. But you've got, and how many employees do you have there at a time? Six?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got six employees. They all drive, that pretty much takes up the parking lot. Question about the local area. Do employees find that it's not difficult to find a spot on the street on Topaz?
I park on the street every day, and the only time that I have trouble is street-sweeping days.
My, the reason I bring that up is that, you know, like a lot of residential areas, people are away at work and not needing those spaces during the day. The corresponding use of that, of those spaces by people who are no longer parking in front of their house, but have come to the vet's office for their jobs, should be able to take those spots. And then they leave about the time the residents get home. I fail to see that there's a problem with street parking unless all these people that live on Topaz and the surrounding cross streets are not using their garages, or they're not working, or they're working at home. And that doesn't appear to be the case. Appears as though, as though people are, we'll get to you in a minute, sir. Appears that people are leaving those spaces open, and your six people could, should easily be able to find parking. Your consideration of ride-share and other ways to reduce the number of spaces that you need in the area, that's commendable, and I would encourage you to pursue that. But I think you as a business, your employees, the local residents, would rather have employees parking on Topaz than people having to deal with one or two or more pets and children walking down Topaz, who, you know, might have a nervous dog, might need to do something on the parkway there. So I think keeping the parking lot for the customers, and at any one time, you've got how many customers in the vet's office?
Maybe, maybe two.
Maybe two at a time. So maybe there are two, or on a busy day, three of those eight spots used. So should parking on the street become a problem? Become a problem, you have those. Right. Of all the vet, veterinarian hospitals, excuse me. Been talking a lot today. Of all the vet hospitals that we've evaluated, no one is allowed to walk the dogs in the neighborhood, and everybody claims they don't. And everybody has medical waste type of a service that comes and gets hazardous byproduct. But apparently, you've not been doing what other vets do, but that's got to change. Would there be a problem with that, is reminding the staff, no walking the dogs?
I think that once, once staff realizes that was important, and I'm fairly new in the hospital manager role, and it is on me to make sure that staff are doing things appropriately. So being made aware of that, we can certainly make changes, and especially if we're going to have more space on the inside, there can be a dedicated space where we can get, I have it pictured in my mind, they make it for balconies, like an indoor/outdoor turf that is specially designed for things like that. So being able to comply with that, especially once we actually have the square footage to do so, I don't think it should be a problem.
But it's also, dogs have to avoid, cats, dogs have to avoid, people walk their dogs. When they come to the clinic, they might walk their dog. Whether they're walking their dog on Topaz, or they're, they park two blocks away and walk their dog and let their dog void, they're still going to have to have their dog void. And it may not be just us as being responsible as a business, but how do you prevent our clients from taking those steps to let their animals eliminate? It's not all a staff problem, it's a nature. It's the nature of the business. They have to go to the restroom somewhere.
I understand that. But you, perhaps, as you understand the problem that the neighborhood has with your business, that you can redouble your efforts to remind your customers, no walking your dogs in the area. If your dog has to go, we have a place inside. If your dog can't wait, be sure you clean it up. Now, the street I live on is very popular for dog walking, and people almost always clean up. But as someone has mentioned before, there are urine stains. I have a streetlight in front of my house. It cannot be cleaned, as much as you might try. It's permanently stained, and there's cement base around it as well. Again, it's something that you need to try to police, and you need to try to encourage your customers to be aware that this is a problem with the neighborhood. Just like a fast food restaurant has a sign next to the drive-in that says, after 11 o'clock, please turn down the boombox, have some pity on our neighbors. You could do the same thing in this regard.
Well, Commissioner Boswell, you might want to propose an additional condition or something in some regard there. But you're at seven minutes. Can we move to Commissioner Hazel time?
Commissioner Hazel time? You may have the floor.
Thank you. So I guess the obvious question is, how many spaces are required for this particular business within the coastal plan? Because they are on the west side of Pacific Coast Highway, I'm sure there are beach, there are people parking there and going down to Topaz and Nob Hill and all of that. So what's required?
So if this were a brand-new vet clinic, a brand-new building coming before you at 3,700 square feet, they would have to build the parking lot at 1 per 250, which is 15 parking spaces.
Okay. We're missing a few. Now, you're not picking up another vet. You're not hiring another vet. No?
Not at this time.
Okay, and obviously, it's so interesting, because we just did another exact same business on PCH and Torrance Boulevard in that little mall there. And they said the same thing, there's not going to be any dog waste. But we have a neighbor saying, a couple of people calling in and saying there's dog waste. And, I mean, they prob, I have dog waste, but I don't live near a vet. So there are those people, but you would have to take that out, and I'm sure they know that probably they get a little bit more than normal. Right? That's a problem. I have a lot of dogs, so I get it. What do we do about that?
About the waste that we make as staff walking our dogs, or about the waste?
I just, I, I feel for those people. She had to put bark down. You know, those are the kinds of things that we have to really address as a planning commission when we're going to, you know, what we could do is condition it so that if the problem continues, then you would, there would be a condition on the conditional use permit, right? So it seems like there might be a problem, and I guess I have a question for the neighbor.
Yes.
So for sure, you know it's not just dogs in the neighborhood.
No, these are people who, I don't know if they're employees, but are people who are in search of grub.
Grubs, yeah, there's no other business.
So it's not the typical neighborhood.
Right.
I get that.
Right.
And I'm not claiming to put that on them.
Right, right. Yeah. Okay, okay, so I'm done.
Okay.
And I can, I can address that. Like I said, I'm newer to the hospital manager role and still getting to know the rules and what we can do to be there. And so it's my job to make sure that the staff conform. So we certainly have things that we can do to address and make sure that the staff do what's needed. And for the clients, we do have reminders and things that go out, things that they need to do to prepare for their appointments. So it would be pretty simple to make sure that everybody that has an appointment receives a notice that they should not be walking their dog in the area, that they can relieve themselves at home first. At home first, or in the patient relief area, which we will work on.
We could push that out to all clients.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would be an automated, it would be an automated thing, so we could be sure that it would go to everybody.
Just take extra steps, like you said.
Commissioner Godeck?
Hello. So do you expect the number of clients that you see on a daily basis to increase with this expansion?
No.
No, so you're going to be seeing the same number of clients? And you typically only have a couple in the office at a time?
Well, we have three exam rooms, so as far as serving a client with a pet, it would be two exam rooms, and then getting ready to load the third, and then the first one would come out.
Sure.
And during COVID, our parking lot was our waiting room.
I remember. I was in that waiting room a couple of times.
There was no clients inside for two and a half years.
Yep. Okay, and so I've also driven by there a bunch of times, and that parking lot, I've never seen it full, except maybe during COVID when you guys were using it as the waiting room. So in my mind, it makes sense to do some sort of hybrid thing where a certain number of spaces are dedicated to staff, and that would at least take a few cars off the street for the full day. And then you would still imagine have enough parking spaces for clients to come in and use your site instead. And then I'm also wondering why the curb is red in front of there? I thought maybe it was because.
Right out of my mouth. Why is that question, curb red right there?
Within the highway.
Is it?
Okay, well.
I mean, further up PCH, it's not red, and even close to.
Right next door, it's not red. And I, there is no difference in the width of the highway at that corner than two storefronts south. I'm sorry to take.
No, 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 no. I did the same with Commissioner Lamb.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's in the city's jurisdiction. I think that's a Caltrans, yeah.
Right, that makes sense.
Caltrans had extra red paint and decided to use it.
Yeah.
I will note, there is a fire hydrant that's off of Topaz, on the Topaz side. So that most likely relates to some of the red curb.
Oh, that makes sense, too. Yep.
There's a yellow fire hydrant there, yeah.
Smart.
That's on the other side of Topaz.
It's, no, it's right here.
It's right, yeah, right below the corner.
Right there.
Oh, oh, I see, on Topaz, right, right, okay, got it.
And then I actually tend to agree with what the architect said about, you know, something's going to go into this location at some point, and this seems like a very low-intensive use compared to what the alternatives may be. And then I was also going to ask about the trash receptacles being relocated, and just as far as the employee parking, like, I like the idea of incentives for public transport, but just because you offer an incentive doesn't mean anybody's going to actually take it. So, you know, I think having something that's more concrete that we know will be put into place would be better than something like that. Yeah, that's it for me for now.
All right, I have questions that I'd like to ask, and then we'll get to you, Commissioner Lamb. So what's the story with what seems to be staff walking pets around the neighborhood to eliminate? I mean.
Historically, they've all been trained to carry bags with them, and they would use the tree belts and pick it up, and that's.
But they are walking the pets. But they are walking the pets around the neighborhood to eliminate?
They have, they have.
They have. I mean, are you gonna be able to run this business without your staff walking pets around the neighborhood to eliminate?
We're gonna have to.
I suspect so, yeah. Okay. And my next question is, why is the curb red?
Well, and then if I may tag on to yours, is part of the design going to have some sort of potty break room in the facility? Is that part of what you're already proposing?
If you look at the floor plan, and I don't know if you have access to that.
We do, we have it right here.
I had the plan in mind for the runs in room 118. They are large. And there is product available that's meant for people that live in apartments or townhomes or things like that.
Yep.
Product that exists to make it possible to have an indoor relief station for pets. And that is a possibility. And I apologize, as we have newer staff and we are kind of working our way through COVID, if there was, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it and things. Now that we're aware of it, as long as you're aware of something.
That's right.
You can fix it. And there are plans. Would the idea of one of those relief stations that could be hosed down and treated in the parking lot in a non-parking space, would one of those be out of the question?
No, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay, okay. So there are solutions.
Where does that waste go through when we're watching you? As a plumber or a maverick?
Oh, I see. So there are waste-neutralizing cleaners and many products that are meant to clean these types of devices. So we would have to make sure that we were doing everything in accordance to regulations for dealing with waste. But there are environmental-safe products that are designed to break down enzymatic cleaners, et cetera.
Just a space for, this is where- Right here, between the fence and the parking lot.
The property, the neighbor's-
Yeah, they have a fence up between the neighbor's parking lot and their parking lots. But there is a space between that fence and the first parking space to the south. So is that the area you're looking at for eliminating, for having the dogs, I mean, animals eliminate?
I'm not good with north and south.
There's a drain right there.
South is the building you're picking up.
Okay, very good. So yes, that is where I was thinking. Because there is, like he says, there is a drain there and it is out of the way.
Area drain that goes to the street. Not a sewage line.
Yeah, that's not optimal, right?
Yeah, it would have, we would have to do some research.
Those were my questions, Commissioner Lamb.
So I would like to have the resident come back up, if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
So you've heard the willingness of the applicant to adjust to the concerns. Is that correct?
I've heard, I've heard them say, they will try to pick up the waste. They said that that's a possibility. They said that they have no plans for expansion at this time. That's what I've heard. And none of that's enforceable. They could say whatever they want. Doesn't mean that they can't go, doesn't mean that they can't expand. Doesn't mean that when they say they'll try, doesn't mean that they will. If I had these kind of conversations with a client, they would say, well, what do you mean, you're gonna try? Either you're gonna do it or you're not.
Okay.
Okay.
So there are some conditions that we could put in place that are enforceable, and that's the parking spaces for staff, right? The additional parking spaces for staff. Now, I'm curious actually also about your, as a plumber, your position on the outdoor relieving station.
So I don't know anything about that. But just as an example, outdoor showers that people have at their homes are only supposed to have cold water only. And that gets violated all the time. People, especially people who live near the beach, might have an outdoor shower or one shower, and they end up having hot water there because, oh, who wants to bathe in cold water? It's there for a reason, so they don't sit there and bathe. Use shampoo, soap. And that would be the least of our worries with animals, soap or shampoo. But that's illegal.
Yeah, thank you. Now, it seems like the problem is, that you're expressing is exclusively to Topaz and on the street.
No, Elvira as well. So Elvira runs parallel with PCH. It's the first block west. And just because somebody visited that neighborhood twice doesn't give a clear view.
Okay, you live on Topaz.
I live on Elvira, 703 Elvira.
You live on Elvira.
I live on Elvira. And between the multiple businesses that are there that don't have adequate parking, like the one that's supposed to have 15 spots, you could also add in the restaurant there. You could add in the beauty parlor as well as the three big offenders, all within half a block of each other. And just because someone person saw-
So you live on Elvira and you're asserting that that the parking places for residents
Right.
are being taken up by their staff. Is that, did I have that correct?
That's correct. Just because they can find a space at that time of day doesn't mean that there aren't residents who are trying to find it an hour later, two hours later, four hours later.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Just because they were given just the one snapshot in time. I could take a video of the gals coming in in their scrubs, all coming in four or five at a time, all coming in at the same time, taking the parking around that, and that's just that business.
That's the visual.
That's the visual.
Okay.
Right. And so it's tough for us to have friends, family, other services come in.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your go.
Stay up there.
Okay. Okay.
My turn?
Yep.
Okay, start the clock. So is there something in the neighborhood that means that the street parking is just for residents?
No.
Okay, so it's pretty much open to whoever wants to park there?
It's open for everybody who wants to park there. But with the exception of, I look at other places in Redondo Beach that have restricted parking. Some of those were near a business that we had because our business was using too much of the restricted parking, and that goes back to the 60s.
So is there restricted parking in that area?
No.
So it's really a moot point. It's public parking.
It is public parking, right.
It's perhaps inconvenient, but there's really nothing we can do about that. Anybody can, anybody can park there, as far as I understand, right?
Yeah, no, it is, you're right. Public parking is public parking, absolutely. But now you are, okay.
So do you know that the people who live in the area that would like to get one of these spots that might not be available when they get home early?
Yes, yes.
And do they have a garage that they could park in?
Yeah, they do.
And do they park in the garage?
Not always, no.
Why not?
Oh, I don't know, you would have to ask them. I'm not gonna speak for that.
Or you would. Because what we're determining here is that street parking is open to whoever finds it. First come, first served. Stay there as long as the posted limits allow. And that's it.
Okay. So does business have any-
If, if
Okay.
there were situations like we just dealt with at the Catalina Coffee House where there are homes in the area that had no garages, that were very old, or the parking in multi-residential units was insufficient and people had to park on the street, that would be a little different. Is that case?
That happens here in our case. Some of the homes there have been there since the 20s. And they don't have adequate parking or the garage space for it.
Do they have garages?
Some have a garage you could not put a Morris Mini into it, Mini Cooper.
It's not really a legal garage then, is it?
Well, maybe it was in the 20s. I wasn't there then, I know, maybe you were.
About the 20s we're talking about now. Yeah, I was there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm older than I look. So-
Just wondering.
You gotta take care of yourself. That's all I can say.
Good advice.
What I'm getting at here is is that there doesn't seem to be the density of parking use in this particular neighborhood as there are in others. There seems to be no problem finding parking during the day when these people, employees arrive.
At 9:00 AM.
However, well, whatever time that they arrive.
Okay.
But in, the flip side of the coin is there seems to be more spaces in the parking lot than they need for their customers. So some of that parking could certainly come off-street and into their lot. Because if they're only gonna have, they've got one doctor and three exam rooms. How many cars are there gonna be out of the eight that are available, eight or nine spots that are available? Two or three for customers? Certainly, some of that parking could be used for employee that would take it off. Now you're looking at maybe two or three, two or three cars a day during business hours, parking on the street at a time when a lot of residents, certainly more than two or three, are at work and not needing them. So I don't see where this is, this is a huge problem. The bigger problem I see is the pet waste and whether we need to actually make a condition of the permit based on whether, or requiring them to not walk these dogs. Every, like I said before, every veterinarian office, vet hospital, whatever you wanna call them, that has come before us has this requirement. You can't walk your dog, your animals in the area. But apparently, they do anyway. So maybe we need to make that a condition for the permit. If they don't have a pro, if they're telling us now there's no problem with that, then accepting that kind of a condition that they will not walk dogs for the purpose of doing their business in the neighborhood shouldn't be a problem. And if it, and if they are, perhaps you see somebody wearing, you know, medical scrubs. Two possibilities. One, it's somebody violating their condition. Or two, somebody who works in a medical facility who's walking their dog before they go to work. So just because they're wearing that kind of attire doesn't necessarily mean that they work there.
Well, I pretty much recognize the 13 employees that have been going there for years. This is not, this is not-
I'm glad you're keeping a close eye on the neighborhood. That's always good. So again, I'm not, I'm not seeing big problems here. We can eliminate the dog-walking issue by making a condition for the permit. That should, does that make you happy?
No, it doesn't. Because when you brought up, do all the neighbors use their driveways or parking garages, you assume that they're supposed to do that because there is a code to have a garage. There's a code to have parking, is that correct?
No, that's not. I made no such assumption.
I'm just saying, does that make sense?
Such assumption.
Okay.
You assumed that I assumed.
Okay.
Apparently.
Okay, I, okay.
I was trying to get some information from somebody who lives in the area as to the incidence of garages. And what we all know is that people put their junk in their garage.
All right, Commissioner Boswell.
Then they complain about not having-
We're at about six minutes now.
Motion to extend?
I know.
Okay, all right.
I'll just make one brief comment. That staff said, how many, 16 spots, was that correct?
15.
How many?
15.
15, they should have 15 spots. Everybody else on Elvira or Topaz that has to remodel has to make available parking places. And they should be able, they should have to do the same. They should have to have 15 spots before they expand or do anything else. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I get to go first. So a couple of questions. First is, is when I'm looking at it on Google Earth, I guess this is, there is a car parked on the parkway. It's a paved parkway where the entrance to the parking lot is. There is a car parked on that, is that? Yeah, it's kinda like sidewalk, I guess. Is that legal? I mean, is that, and, I mean, does any-
I do not believe it's legal. It was out there when I walked the site. I believe it's the owner of 408 Topaz
Okay.
that parks his car there.
I would affirm that, that is a fact.
On the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
They've also had no problem with us having our patients eliminate on their lawn.
Okay.
I want to, I try.
Right.
They got no problem, right.
So, and would we have the ability to put in conditions about the animals being eliminated off the property in the operation of this business? I mean, we have all kinds of things in there about noise and, you know, smell and stuff like that. Seems like that additional condition is not really that extreme, right?
Correct. You know, and especially as the testimony that the office manager gave about the, you know, that they have, with that expansion, they'd have that space to create an area where they could have that kind of facility indoors rather than outdoors.
And we would also have the ability to add a condition about, about having available parking spaces for customers and not taking up street spaces for employee parking?
Yeah, you could require that their employees have to park on the site.
Right, on the parking. And we would have the ability to add a condition that all of their animal waste has to be properly disposed of and not washed into gutters and drainage, rain drainage, et cetera, et cetera. Now, what would be the, what would be the enforcement consequence of violating any one of those conditions? And what would be the reporting mechanism, et cetera, et cetera?
Right, so, you know, it would be, you know, if it's sent to code, you know, if somebody contacted code enforcement, there was a violation and they had, you know, they'd go through their documentation. If it ends up being something where it's a nuisance or is determined in violation of the condition. Like ultimately, it would, you know, we would look at, okay, that needs to be enforced, that needs to be corrected. It would be, it would come back to this body for, because you have that as a condition.
And enforcement, we would basically shut them down, right?
Yeah, code enforcement will, they'll have to document it. So they have to verify that that is the situation. They would give them different citations, you know, go through that process. And then if it was, you know, continued violation, it was something that they had documented, then if it needed to, it could come back here. We had that similarly where something was going to come back to the planning commission. They ended up correcting the, the property owner in that case They ended up correcting the, the property owner in that case had, had corrected the issue so it didn't have to come back.
Okay, Commissioner Lamb.
You answered, your questions answered most of mine. I have one more question, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Now, as you've heard, the residents on Elvira are very sensitive to the issues. Is that correct? I've heard that.
Yes, he was in the office earlier this week, as I was saying, so we want to make sure they're addressed.
Right, right. Now, if your employees need to park on the street, what would prevent you from, or what would be an incentive or, and/or prevent you from insisting that your employees park anywhere but Elvira? Could you do that?
Sure, we could. You mean Elvira and Topaz?
We could make that a requirement now.
Maybe Elvira and Topaz, is that possible? That you could, knowing that there's a certain residential sensitivity here?
We want to strike a good balance now. The city's mission statement, it talks about quality of life for people that work in Redondo Beach and people that live in Redondo Beach. So we want to be fair. So asking our staff who are going to be performing physical labor all day to park a block or two away is, is, is not going to be something that I would like to do for my staff. But does that outweigh the benefits of them working cheek by jowl up against each other like this? My office is a literal closet.
I know your office.
Oh my gosh. So weighing the balance of, you know, if it's not going to be possible to get the permits, then we will do what we have to do. But we also want to encourage consideration of the quality of life of the staff. And when deciding how many parking spaces need to be devoted to the staff versus to the clients, we have maybe five of them so that people can come in and pick up their medications if they're not staying for an appointment. And relocating the dumpsters, that would leave, that would leave much more parking in the parking lot than we have been using for staff. We're not at all opposed to compromising and making sure that things are what they need to be.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, totally took over.
No, that's fine. I'm still, with the fecal matter, the voiding, the elimination of the pets, is there any public area where we wouldn't be encroaching upon personal property? Where an animal could go to the restroom and we could pick it up and do what we have been doing?
On the north side of your facility, but it's all concrete.
Pardon me?
On the north side of your facility, on Topaz, just the block that's right in front of your business.
Where the mural is?
Mm-hmm.
Concrete.
But it's all just concrete at this point.
Is it possible for us to develop a grassy area on our own property on that sidewalk?
To chip out the concrete and plant grass and lay sod?
Yeah.
Where the plant, where the parking, yeah, somebody must have poured that at one point, because I don't, that's brandy. So if there's a building and then there's a sidewalk, and then what would normally be a grassy parkway is cement.
You know, they could have that, they could remove that and put that as planted.
That might just solve all of the problems.
On, on Topaz, right, yeah.
On Topaz, yeah. And it's a very wide sidewalk, by the way.
Yes.
There appears to be a space between the fence and the, the southernmost first parking space against the building. You know what I'm talking about? It's probably three or four feet wide, I don't know, I can't really tell from.
Would you put grass there?
Sort of like the animal elimination area that you find at an airport. You know what I'm talking about?
It's next to the bins.
You put a little plastic fire hydrant.
That's what, that's what I was thinking about earlier, yeah.
But I think we could have a greater space on that sidewalk in front of that mural, if that's preferable.
And it would be more visible, so your customers would also
Yeah.
be more inclined to use it.
So you're talking about this parkway right here?
Yeah, that is a park.
Right there, right around there.
Yeah.
I mean, is that something that's doable?
Yeah.
Yes, conditionable, yes.
Just like my neighbor, they poured it. And you know, today, they probably wouldn't be able to pour it, it's poured in cement.
Yeah, and that would be considered part of the, the property part of, that's not on the public street?
It would have, we'd have to have, like, it would have to be as approved by the engineering division, yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be essentially creating a parkway where there is no, is none now, right?
Be replacing the concrete parkway with?
Reestablishing a previously existing parkway.
Ooh, and plant a tree.
We like trees.
I really do.
It is really, really wide.
With perme- permeable.
Yes, permeable. Randy, don't make fun. That's what it is. It's currently non-permeable, right? No, it is, it would actually be a great.
It would be a great improvement.
Does this create an issue with a concentration of pet urine in one small space? I mean, that, that's gonna.
You have a restaurant directly across the street from that, from what you're proposing.
We'll, we'll make it so the patrons can't use this particular.
Grassy spot.
If they don't, if they don't expand.
I like that restaurant.
If they don't expand, you might have a restaurant on the other side as well.
You know, we're trying to find solutions for, for the business and for you guys and, you know.
Because the business exists there, so the problem exists. We're trying to solve the problem, you know?
I, oh, I do have a question.
And, yeah.
Um.
Are you, are you?
It's really short.
Okay, thank you.
Very short. Do you guys have Saturday hours?
Yes.
Each one?
Eight to one, okay, because that is where you're going to find street beach parking, is on the weekends. You know, nuts, yeah.
Yeah.
Weekend.
Yeah.
Okay.
As, as a matter of being practical here, to have any animal, we can't train them to void inside.
Right.
No, I know, I, I know that.
So I'm trying to find a solution.
The solution would be.
That's realistic.
Yep.
If they allow it, that makes this a pretty good solution.
Yeah.
If the city.
Well, they have that additional area in the back, in the, in the parking lot. There is a place they can put an animal elimination area right here.
Right in there, too.
Yeah, because the fence is right here.
It could be a bit better.
But you got, you got to remember, there's cars.
Yeah, there's, there's.
The cars are trying to line up, you know, between the white lines and.
Yeah.
And we do want to avoid a hazard for the staff and.
Is it possible to do what virtually every commercial business has done over the last two years? And make those spaces a little narrower?
Oh, please don't.
I hate to encourage that, because it's so aggravating.
The number of large vehicles.
But if that gives you the. If that gives you the space to be able to put that.
You've got animals hopping in and out, you're like.
And I think there's a, a limit. I think there's a legal limit. So I, I would just like to summarize what we have.
Yep.
So you have offered, in terms of the pet waste, you have offered to provide that space on the, on the parkway. In terms of the parking, you have agreed to add additional parking, the side and the bins, as well as to allow parking in that lot for staff.
Yes, we can definitely move the bins. As far as adding another space, we'd have to check with engineering and make sure that it was able to be done to code, yeah.
Right, right, on that one southern side, I think we, we discussed that that would be something that you would attempt. And, and that you would, perhaps you want to include a sign for your staff that parking on, on, on this local street next, next door, Topaz and
Elvira.
Elvira is not permitted. A nice little walk from another area probably can be arranged.
If I may, point of clarification. It's code, municipal code requirement that all parking associated with this business be off-street. So we want to be careful about talking about them having employee parking allowed off, off-site and on the street. It's required by our ordinance to be off the street, on the property.
Right.
Employees, customers, everybody.
Right.
Staff and, uh.
Yes.
Staff and clients.
Correct.
Well, there you go. It kind of like ends the discussion, doesn't it?
Thank you.
Wish we'd known that to start with.
Well, yes, but they still, it's, it's not as if we, you know, because of it's non-conforming, it's a, a legal non-conforming, we can't require them to add parking spaces on the site from what, what is there.
But it sounds like there's plenty of parking on the site. You're going to have two or three customers and six employees and they've got eight spots, they got one, they need one more spot or somebody barks on the street or at the restaurant.
Yeah, but it's, it's a change of clientele that is occurring. It's not like we can wait for those three to leave before the other three can park.
Or if somebody is coming and picking after.
It's continually revolving.
You might have three people there and three more people arrive before any of them leave.
Yes.
Five spots in use.
You're going to need underground parking.
You're going to love it.
You're going to need underground parking. Or rooftop. Yeah, I'm not sure what the solution is if they must have all customers and all employees parking in the lot?
Well, that, I mean, that was the intent of that.
That's, that's just the baseline requirement for all of our private uses residential and commercial.
But it's a non, but it's, but we have the requirement, or the non-conforming, the legal non-conforming that does not have to meet the require, all of the requirements.
The use that they're proposing isn't as, as our, as Stacy identified is use not listed with the generation rate, so it defaults to the one per two fifty. And that's all we can require of this project and that's, that's the condition for.
But we, but we don't require it because it's a, a legal non-conforming, we can meet that.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Okay, so I'm confused. Are, are they or are they not required to have all their employees and customers park in the lot?
They are.
Whatever the circumstances are now, are they required?
Across?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
How are violations of that handled?
Are you looking for street parking?
I'm looking on.
It is, it's a legal non-conforming. So if it's not, it, it only has to comply with the parking regulations to the extent of what's existing. So whatever their spaces that they have there, their staff and their customers can park there. I mean, there is mention of other businesses that don't have any parking and they're, it's not that they're not allowed to operate, they're not in violation. This would not be in violation by having that non-conforming number of spaces. If people are, end up parking on the street because there's that overlap timeframe of somebody coming or going, that is not going to be a violation because it's part of the non-conforming, it's allowed.
No enforcement of it then?
It wouldn't, it, there's nothing to enforce because it would, it's allowed to have the reduced existing number of, of spaces. You wouldn't, you, if it had fifteen spaces, it would be able to accommodate all of that. But because this is a, a legal non-conforming, it's allowed to ha- continue with the amount of parking spaces that are there. You, you don't have the, you know, it's not that you're going to require additional parking spaces. But what you, you know, but that's where you're looking for those solutions. Can it be that a certain number of sta- of spaces on the site need to be devoted towards staff? Or whatever it might be that you feel is that, that balance so that it's not taking up the, you know, the, the staff are not all just parking on the street, but you're, you're, you know, creating a balance to accommodate that with that non-conforming number of spaces.
So a question, the bike shop has been vacant for, since two thousand and one you had mentioned? I mean, two thousand and twenty-one?
Yeah, roughly.
So prior to that, because you've been there twenty years, how many parking spaces did you have for your business? Because some of that was for them, right?
Yeah, we, we would have a gentleman's handshake that it was four and four.
That it was what?
Four and four.
Okay, so you, you now have twice as much parking. So, and yet with four spaces, if you had three customers there and three more arrived before they left, those customers were going to have to park on the street. So what we have now is, is an ability to take some of that on-street parking off because of your, you've got the whole lot. And yet it's still not quite big enough. But it seems to me that with these, these various factors that you're only going to need a couple of street parking, a, a couple of spots on the street for employees so that you can keep maybe four or five spots open for customers, right? Okay. Now, the restaurants in the area are dumping eighteen, twenty people, right? Out on the street. So at least you're not impinging on their business. But but I guess I could just keep coming back to the fact that you, you don't find a problem finding parking. Your employees don't find a problem finding park, vacant parking spots on the street. It tells me that the parking intensity of, for the businesses in the area during the time that you're operating during the day are not as intensive as most neighborhoods. And conditions are certainly better now taking over the whole space than they were before. And I think that if you didn't expand, like the architect said, there could be another restaurant dumping eighteen people out on, out on the on the street. Instead of two or three. So I'm seeing that your expansion is probably the best thing parking-wise that could happen to that neighborhood short of somebody putting a one-person company next door to you. So again, I'm not seeing it's a, it's a terrible problem. I'm seeing the pet waste issues as, as the major problem.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Hazelton.
Just another quick question. Did you say that you thought you might be able to take the fence down or you didn't want to take the fence down? Because you might be able to create one more space there or not? The south side.
You could put pylons and prevent them driving through to the next parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could put up some alternative barrier if we needed to. Or we take the fence down and we see how it works with our new neighbor.
The fence was a problem, I mean, you put the fence up because
The business next door would, would have traffic coming down Topaz into our parking lot to park in their parking lot instead of using their driveway. Using their driveway is difficult to get into from PCH.
Right.
So it was more convenient for them to let their cars go through our parking lot.
Cut through.
So if you took.
So that was fine when the building was a garage door store and a sofa store when I bought it.
Right.
Prior to that, in the eighties and mid nineties to the mid nineties, it was a veterinary hospital.
You know if that parking lot's filled? The one next door? The one that, on the other side of your fence?
What about it?
Where most of the time are their cars parked and filled in there?
It was just purchased a couple of months ago.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm not sure what kind of business they're going to have there. But so far, it's been real quiet. They just started doing some remodeling today.
Right.
But they had their truck in our parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
Well, like a good neighbor, we're helping them out.
Yeah, I was going to say, it, it sounds like they probably want to cut a deal with their neighbors somehow.
I was going to say, you know, if they, if they don't need parking, you might be able to put the fence down, bring the fence down and then you could have overflow one way or the other there.
Yeah.
So I just did want to clarify that it is our job to be concerned about the neighbors. And it is our job to be concerned about you guys. So it goes both ways. We're trying to find this middle ground where the neighbors are happy and they have places to park.
Right.
And.
We've never had no center cars, nothing contentious, it's never been brought up to us.
Right, right, right.
You know, the, the woman that spoke earlier about her house being two houses away from us, I never had any conversations that I recall with her parents about the, the waste.
Right.
And it seems to be coming up.
And now it's rental. Be settled out by having your patients, owners know that, you know, you guys have to be really careful.
Really careful.
The neighborhood doesn't like it and.
It, it seems to be an issue now.
I did want to point out, I'm sure you guys are really aware that Nob Hill has a grassy area there in what would be the equivalent of your parkway. So they also have grass, so that may not be, you know, out of the question. So Nob Hill has the same thing and they have grass there.
Well, they have a dirt parkway that's two houses away.
Chair Gavis, if I may, I just wanted to let you know, the Assistant City Attorney had let us know you wouldn't be able to make a condition of them doing that with, with anything in the parkway because that's in the, the public right-of-way.
Right.
But if, you know, if you wanted to say add a finding that the applicant testified that they'd be, you know, willing to apply for.
Right.
I mean, it's just acknowledging that they're willing to apply for it. So I just wanted to let you know, like, not to look for that as a condition, but rather just maybe acknowledging that.
Yeah, the condition would be that they can't, they cannot have their patients eliminating on the public streets around there.
Right. I would say they couldn't have their staff taking their patients, but I don't think we can prohibit their clients from walking their dogs wherever they want.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that's the staff, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody can really control it.
We can do our best to let them know.
Happens to be one of their patients.
It does just go to the smaller light in the area. If you have dogs being imported, going to the vet and they are dirty enough the, the neighborhood, I know it's not fair call, but they're the attractive nuisance for them.
You know, it is interesting, up in Palos Verdes, the vet we go to is in a shopping center, there is no grass. So they're making it work up there. So somehow I think that it can make, we can make it work here, you know? I love the fire hydrant right there, how are they not using it? Since I was a kid, it's a beautiful street.
Friend of mine built a house on Elvira. Across the street from you.
Yeah, so we want to find a nice little
We want to solve the problem, did, um, yes, Commissioner Boweswell.
All right, so on the, on the parking lot with the fence, rather leave the fence up because of the history of traffic going through, would, would putting a chain across?
Yeah, some other type of barrier, sure.
Because, yeah, because when you mentioned before some other kind of barrier, I'm thinking a lot of, shoot, where I used to work in, on Wilshire in Miracle Mile, all of these parking lots were divided into different sections, known by different people and they were all using chain to separate, this is my part of the parking lot, because it looks like one giant parking lot. Anyway, that could be an idea. Another option might be, I don't know what. Another option might be, I don't know what nature of, of, of restaurant is, is near you there that has all this overflow? If they are mainly.
Ramen restaurant, the Rockin' Ramen.
Is it mainly in a nighttime restaurant?
Eleven to eleven are their hours.
But do they fill up at eleven?
Yeah. They're, they're tight on their parking.
We've had some of their patrons park in our parking lot.
Yeah.
Do they have a dog?
Yes.
Potential new business. Okay, so, so working out something where you have, uh, a business in the area that has mostly nighttime use of their parking space where you could trade off, say, hey, you can park in our lot at night, we can park in your lot during the day?
What about liabilities? Cars hitting cars, can't do that.
Are you sure?
Insurance liabilities.
Okay.
All right.
It's not a good idea.
All right.
If a kid skateboards in my parking lot after hours, I'm still liable.
So I'd like to make a motion?
Yep.
Um, if it's not to close the public hearing, you'll just have to wait till you close the public hearing to make a.
That was her motion is to close the public hearing. But I wanted to get other public comments if there were any before doing that. All right, uh, do we have any other public comments?
Wendy?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the commissioners? All right. So it's possible for us to put in conditions that, that the staff of this, uh, are not allowed to take their patients around and eliminate in the neighborhood off premises. And that they, uh, they properly and in a sand sanitized way acceptable to, uh, to the health department, make sure that all the elimination that takes place on the property is done in a hygienic and et cetera safe manner. And we can require them to have all parking of staff and customers be on, on their premises.
Um, you may, you, you could, you could put that in there. I, you may want, just because of that legal nonconforming, like that, it's, like, that's not going to really be feasible and like enforcement of that's going to, you know, you don't want that coming back too because you may instead look to say a certain number of the spaces on the premises must be designated for employee-only parking so that you're getting at least, you know, some of the employees on that.
Yeah, it doesn't sound right to me. It'd be customer-only parking, right?
I think the concern was that the staff are parking on the street parking.
I think they're concerned that parking spaces, spaces of staff or customers are being taken on the street. That's what it sounds like to me.
A little bit of a difference because a staff member will be there for eight hours whereas a customer is going to be there for 45 minutes, you know? So if a customer has to park on tow paths or they will come and go and the neighbor was saying that they come and they're there all day. So it might be if we put half of the parking designated for staff in the parking lot, part of the problem will be solved.
But, um, I guess what I'm suggesting is that if you have a, if you require all the customers and, uh, staff not to park on the, on the street, uh, that they're going to have to figure out some way whether it's renting parking spaces from their neighbor for their staff to park, right? Some, they'll come up with some solution that will enable them to achieve this. Otherwise, you know, you're not really accomplishing anything, right? You're shaking your head.
Yes, I am shaking my head.
You're shaking your head.
See that?
You don't think they can rent spaces from their neighbor?
I, I think it's prohibitive for the business to do that. And, um, I, so, so if I were to make a motion, I would make a motion that would, uh, to include two to three, I want to hear from you, staff, increase the staff parking. That's clear. Commissioner Hazelton has said appropriately, right, that having clients park on the street is preferable than the staff who are taking up the, the parking spaces for, um, for a length of time. Commissioner Boswell has pointed out that it's public, it's, the parking on the street is public parking. So, so they have a right, that, that the public has a right to park on the street, right? So, um, uh, so coming to a balance would be, since no staff, apparently no staff are allowed to park in the parking, parking spaces now, that, that increasing the number of available parking spaces in the parking lot would be reasonable. It re, it's a reasonable solution. And, um, and from there, we've already determined in terms of the pet waste that they're going to make an effort to, and I, I think, what do we put in the condition on this? We can't condition that they, um, use the Parkway, uh, put lawn in the Parkway, but we can do. You could, um, you could make a finding that the applicant, um, uh, agreed and they, you'd want to confirm that, agreed to, um, uh, apply for, uh, removing the pavement in the Parkway, uh, adjacent to their, um, property and replace it with permeable surface. Um, you know, so like, so you'd have that in the findings, not in the conditions. And, and the space of, and the, and the area of that space is, is significant. It's from the corner, right, to, 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 to the drive.
Right, but the only condition that's applicable is that, that, that they would not, uh, staff of this clinic would not eliminate animals anywhere else in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That staff would not.
Right.
That's right. We can't do it for, for client, but staff would not.
Right, but let's, and, and we should probably focus on one, one sort of potential condition at a time. So let's just start with the parking. Would it solve the problem to require, uh, all employees of this clinic to park onsite?
I think it would be reasonable to add three parking spaces for staff.
But I mean, we, let's not put a count in. And that, and the way, the reason I'm, I am suggesting that is that then they can manage how many spaces by whatever ride sharing or whatever the thing they work on or Uber or whatever, uh, they can actually manage how many spaces they leave for customers by, by managing their own employee parking.
But isn't that kind of leaving an open, you know, what if they, oh, well, we'll only give them, we'll only do one.
I don't know what incentivizes them to do that. But otherwise, you, you have to restrict somehow their customers from parking off-site, which I don't think we're really allowed to do.
No, of course.
Right. Whereas if they, if we, if we say, okay, all your employees who are coming to work have to park in, in your part onsite, then they can, by means of whatever mode of transportation, whether it's bicycle or whatever it is, that they're going to get to work to leave enough spaces that they think are adequate for their employee. Because they're, they're incentivized to have their customers park onsite because that's the safest way of transporting a sick animal to a hospital, right?
So, so, um, if you, if you put a condition that all of their employees must park in the parking lot.
Yes.
Right? So if they have five employees, those employees must park then in the parking lot. And I believe that that's prohibitive. And it, and it restricts the amount of.
Only if all five are driving to work in separate cars.
And, and in fact, they probably will be. So.
It's up to them, right?
No, so, so that's the likely, that's, that's likely what is happening. So assigning, assigning three parking spaces seems reasonable to me.
But then that permanently pushes two employees out into street parking.
Maybe.
Better than the six employees that are going out there now.
Maybe.
Correct. We try to just make it better, a bad situation better.
How about another idea?
Okay.
Is the architect still listening? Maybe, I don't know.
He is, he's still listening, waiting for a chance to, to comment, but I, I did not want to interrupt the discussion because it needs to be evolving.
So I don't know the dimensions of that parking lot, but basically right now you've got four spaces facing south, four spaces facing north, uh, with a, a drive access down the middle. Is it possible to take those four spaces facing on the south side of, of the parking lot and create tandem parking that goes, that faces, um, or actually that's the west side of the parking lot, west and east?
Right.
Okay, so could you turn, can you take those four spaces and make tandem parking that will fit six tandem spots?
No, the answer's no. Um, once this project goes, you know, further into permit application, it's going to be routed to all of the departments, including Public Works and so on and so forth. And that's where we're going to run into trouble if we have mandated conditions which are not achievable on the additional conditions of approval that may be applied or not to this particular application. It's not possible really within the property boundaries of this site to add parking. So I would respectfully request that the commission refrain from requesting additional parking above and beyond what's there right now. We can certainly improve where the, the trash cans are placed. That frees up a total of nine spaces. I wholeheartedly support the idea of having a few dedicated, uh, staff parking spaces as was suggested. We've discussed that and I think that's, that is contributing significantly to reducing the amount of congestion on the street itself and improving the lives of the residents. Short of really tearing the building down or not allowing anything to go in that empty suite, uh, we, we have to recognize that this is actually a commercial zone and this is, this business is by no means, I think, an offender in terms of parking. As you mentioned, there are restaurants which are far worse and are you setting a precedent that the restaurant employees now have to have a special dedicated parking lot that the customers can't use it? Anyway, without going into that discussion, as an architect, I would say, no, it's not possible to increase the number of spaces on this site. So I would respectfully request you don't, uh, place that as a condition. If I may go further while I'm still here talking, um, as far as, uh, an exterior pet elimination area either on or off the site, could I also respectfully request that that be not made a condition? I'm, I, I have no thoughts one way or another about restricting, uh, the practice of walking animals. That's not my concern, but my concern is that, that if you did, uh, place a condition requiring an outdoor elimination area either on or off the site, that would pose significant problems for the, uh, for the applicant in terms of the public health and, uh, Public Works review. Generally speaking, I, I design many, many, uh, pet spaces and placing outdoor elimination areas usually entails some kind of covered structure, uh, some kind of outdoor plumbing area with hot and cold water. It would take away from, uh, we couldn't do that on the street, of course. So it would take away from the parking if we were to have to do that. I'd like to just leave it open as a suggestion, uh, that we explore. I can talk to my clients about the possibility of developing an indoor area, um, and then just going with that mandate about no walking pets outside, but really place, having a, a condition of building an outdoor elimination area, I think is going to be a very difficult one to fulfill in practice. Any questions?
Yes. So what you're telling me, my original question is, there is no room to create tandem parking on the west side of, of the lot and keep the east side of the lot open for four or five customer spots?
Unfortunately, no.
How about tandem parking that would, that would get you five spots?
Uh, I, I would prefer to see you allow, uh, I would prefer to see you allow, um, compact spaces. Tan, tandem spaces are very, very hard to control and I don't think we have the width to allow that.
The tandem spaces would be for the employees who arrive there at about the same time in the morning and park squeezed up against each other bumper to bumper and all the way over to the west. It would be approximately the same width as the parking spaces are taking up now, but you, I think you should, you should be able to fit three cars in each tandem row if you squeeze them together like that. That allows for the entire staff to be parking in the lot and it still leaves four or more spaces for customers. And that eliminates anyone from needing to park on the street.
Um, uh, the city standards have a requirement for backup space behind the, uh, let's call it the ninety-degree parking. Uh, it's usually twenty-four to twenty-six feet and I don't think we can achieve that on the width of the site that we have.
Twenty-four point five.
Yeah.
Sounds like a variance is required.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
I, 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 I understand neighborhoods that, uh, are up in arms about outsiders or business use of their street parking because everybody looks at that space in front of their houses. That's really for people who come to visit me, but it's not. I mean, where I live during AWSO soccer season, you are not going to find street parking. It is just not. Because it's taken up by 4,000 cars to send on the neighborhood. So I understand that it's, it's, it's not the ideal thing, but I think this, this parking intensity of this business, especially considering they have more parking now than they did for the majority of the time that they've been at that location, I think that what we're seeing is an improvement in the parking situation. If they give the parking spaces as a priority to the employees, then we're really only looking at, like has been said before, short-term parking of, of customers in the area. Not the ideal thing, you know, for transporting sick pets. But when I had cats for twenty-some odd years, I don't think I ever got into the vet's parking lot. So, but then that's not dogs. So it's different. But still, I understand. But there's, there's not a good solution here according to all of the regulations and the, and the nonconforming, uh, aspects that are grandfathered in. Uh, I think we've asked about, we've about beat this thing to death. Uh, I don't know that there is a better, a better solution than just have the employees park in the lot. And then most of your customers will still have, be able to park there as well. Occasionally one or two won't.
Sean, it looked like you had something to say.
Well, we can't in fact manipulate or redesign the, the parking. It has to meet the current standards that we have in our municipal code for commercial parking lots. If this was Artesia Boulevard, we could do something like what the commission is entertaining with valet parking and other options, but, um, you know, at this time, we don't have that flexibility at this location.
To reconfigure the parking.
Additionally, um, associate, what was that?
Uh, to reconfigure the parking.
To reconfigure the parking.
Right, but we can, we can, if we wanted to say a certain number of spaces are for staff or that all staff have to park on the premises, we could make that a condition.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not saying we would.
Just to clarify something I said earlier.
Hypothetically.
So all required parking is required, associated with the land use is required to be on the same property. And in this case, the required parking is the legal nonconforming number of what we have existing, which is nine.
Right.
So.
Okay, you were going to point out something else.
Yes, uh, there are no, if you, if you'd like to share.
Oh, sure. Yeah, in the coastal zone, compact spaces aren't allowed.
Yes.
So we wouldn't be able to explore that. And as, as the architect pointed out, there's a 25-foot backup requirement. This shows 24 and five inches. It's close.
Oh, geez.
Okay, do we have anything else? Did you have a motion?
Did you have a motion?
If I may, real quick, before you close the public hearing, I'd like to just list something, because I'm not typing it up. I don't have the capability on this particular computer. But I wanted to just note the things that I've heard. And if they're, you know, like you want to tweak that language or consider it differently, that's fine. One would be adding a finding, and I think you'd want to confirm this with the applicant before closing the public hearing, adding a finding that the applicant provided testimony that they agreed to apply to replace adjacent to the property on tow paths.
Parkway, I think the word.
Yeah. To apply to replace the parkway, thank you.
The parkway, not the sidewalk, the parkway.
In the plan, it says public sidewalk, right at the top.
It's the parkway. It's the parkway. That's what we know it as in Public Works. So the applicant provided testimony that they agreed to apply to replace the parkway adjacent to the property on tow paths from pavement to permeable surface. Here are the conditions I'm hearing might be, you might be interested in adding. Employees shall not let animals evacuate off-site other than immediately adjacent to the site.
Evacuate or eliminate?
What did I say?
Evacuate.
Oh, eliminate, whatever you. They just can't, they can't leave. Eliminate.
What is, I'm not sure what the last part would mean, Brandy. Was that only adjacent to the?
To the site, so they wouldn't be going in.
So the parkway is not on-site, really?
Right. Correct.
But in the.
But that way, they're not going in front of other properties, only in front of their, you know, along their properties.
Well, if that's the case, that adjacent neighbor would never file a complaint, right? So that's really what the deal is, is that, or I'm sorry, what is the proper term? It's not a complaint, it's a?
They're not going to bring it to our attention.
To use a technical term, complaint.
What are you going to do if they move?
The councilman and say, it's not working out.
Right.
Yeah, what are you going to do if they move?
So essentially, it's essentially an agreement that they don't complain.
But what if that neighbor moves?
Now, wait, now, wait, now, wait.
Wait, what?
Then another neighbor comes in and says, hey, what are you doing? Yeah, well, we need to.
Employees will not allow the pet to eliminate in the neighborhood only adjacent to the property unless permission is given, correct? Unless permission is given.
What kind of permission? Is it written permission, you know, like that's?
We can fix the language, right? We know what, we know what the meaning is. Do you want me to, do you want me to get the exact language right now? Or do you want to, are you able to?
We would have to.
I think we'd be better off not saying unless permission is given because I think that we don't, I don't know the situation of that house. We don't know if they're, I don't want to know the situation of that house, but I just don't think it's, yes, they can use adjacent property. That, I think we should just.
They may not be the property owners, they might be tenants.
A renter, and I didn't want to say.
That's still fine, that's still fine.
Well.
They could move out a month later.
No, because.
And you got a new tenant that says no.
That the property, the person has said it's okay. A new renter comes in, and now they're saying,
It's not a solution.
Why is this vet pooping in my yard?
Well, then they make an arrangement with them. Then the veterinarian hears about it and stops the practice, right? Stops the practice of the, stops the arrangement. But now we have a lawyer.
So employees shall, we've got Cheryl Park here. She's our Assistant City Attorney. So employees shall not let animals eliminate off-site. And we had other than immediately adjacent to the site. The concern is, like, what does that mean? And how's that defined? And obviously, you guys had that same concern. So just eliminate off-site.
Right, the parkway really is part of the site, right?
No.
Okay.
The parkway is not part of the site. So any conditions that are associated with that would really not be properly in the CUP. So especially because that parkway is city parkway, it would be inappropriate to require anything associated with that parkway in the CUP. Even the recital, which I understand the applicant might be willing to do, I think that's something that the city council or the Public Works Commission would have to look at to change that concrete into a permeable surface. Because once you have animal waste, that goes into our waters. It affects our permitting. It creates a whole other host of issues that we need to grapple with. So I would probably veer away from that, even in the findings. It's in the public record because it's part of this public hearing. So if that's something that, you know, staff wanted to look at at a later point as a holistic thing that, you know, the city wanted to do or the city council wanted to do, I think that's appropriate at that time.
The city in general agreeing that animals will eliminate on parkways.
Yeah, I just, I think that that.
It's what happens anyway, but.
Right, but this is an affirmative action that, you know, we would be asking the applicant and our staff to take. So I think that's kind of outside the purview of this CUP hearing.
Yeah, so I think you're directing us to, or advising us that whatever arrangements there would be to create an on-site elimination spot would have to be definitely on-site, not on the parkway.
Correct.
Okay.
But if.
But I mean, the fact is, I don't even think we need to direct that. We're just directing that they can't take the animals off-site to eliminate. That's all we're saying.
I think that is the better approach.
If all of a sudden they decide they want to redo their parkway, that's, they could ask.
They can come back.
See to redo the parkway.
Correct, they can come back before this commission or their appropriate commission or city council and make that type of request. But I.
I don't have to make a request to redo my parkway, and my parkway is bigger than that. So I would just.
As long as, yes.
Able to redo it, you know? So maybe commercials different?
Well, because we're talking about a city parkway, it's different.
All parkways in Redondo are city parkways. All park, my parkway, even though I'm maintaining it, I'm just a couple blocks away, it belongs to the city, supposedly. Yeah.
It does, yes, you're correct.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think it would be that difficult for them to go redo their parkway.
It would be a huge improvement, too.
It's got to be expensive. Well, I think what we're hearing is the public parkway is not a solution.
Right.
Yeah? We do have a public comment, by the way. Go ahead.
What about this additional finding? Applicant will apply to replace the pavement to permeable surface. Are we keeping that?
I would suggest not keeping that recital.
Okay.
Just that we already have that testimony on the record, yeah.
Okay.
It opens a Pandora's box.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go back through. No.
We have one public comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Should we take that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hello. I just want you.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Leslie Flysher. I spoke earlier, I just, you guys actually highlighted, and you've gone through what I was questioning, so we're good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh. Can you hear me now? It's solved, it's solved.
Okay, all right, so never mind.
Her concern that she had earlier, she feels is solved, yeah. So here, no additional findings. I'm hearing for additional conditions. Employees shall not let animals eliminate off-site. A designated indoor elimination area must be provided. That was one of the things that they had.
Do we really want to, is it, do we care if it's indoor or outdoor?
Apparently, we do. You don't want soaking into the groundwater.
I, if I may, Chair, I think that might be an issue with our lid requirements, standard urban stormwater mitigation planning requirements for, to have waste, you know, on the exterior surface without actually treating it before it goes off-site. So indoor is highly recommended, and I don't think we should say it's okay to do it in the parking lot.
And it wouldn't prohibit them if they could meet all of the necessary requirements to doing it outdoors. But they had mentioned that they would, with having the expanded space, that they would look to provide that elimination area indoors. X, we didn't set a number. Number of parking spaces shall be designated as employee parking only. Trash receptacles shall not be located in parking spaces.
Did we come up with that?
The architect actually agreed that they wouldn't need to have the trash receptacles, that wouldn't need to take up that space.
The trash receptacles are not in parking spaces right now.
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
I thought they were up against the fence to the south of all the parking spaces.
Yep.
Oh, they're taking that one spot that's to the south? Okay. Because the area is too narrow between that spot and the fence? Actually, there's a wall right there, right? Yeah, I didn't hear anyone say that it took a spot.
This would just clarify it, so it's not, like, this way, it doesn't get moved around, you know, it won't get moved around or left in parking spaces, yeah.
Impede.
Impede. Shall not impede into the parking spot spaces.
It's right up against the wall, right? The dumpster. Yeah, that doesn't take a parking spot. Who said it took a parking spot? Huh? Oh, okay.
He's going to put it.
Okay.
Trash receptacles shall not impede into parking spaces.
All right.
Point of clarification on the conditions. No elimination off-site. X number of parking spaces for staff. Trash receptacles will not impede parking space. And was there one more?
Designated indoor elimination area must be provided.
Yeah. Okay.
And X, we, there was no set number, right?
Is that 10?
That was not prohibitive, is that correct?
What?
The indoor, indoor elimination program.
Because that would end up going through, you know, sanitary sewer and be treated in a different way than runoff or into a storm drain, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, and it's not prohibitive for the applicant, is that correct?
They had mentioned that they would be able to set aside that area. In the, yeah, in the newer. Well, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be a requirement if it's denied.
Okay, just clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we haven't designated the number, did you say three? How many spots for employees?
Three or four sounds good. Three, I'll go for three. That would be in my motion.
Let's say three is the maximum. Okay, so do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any public comments at this time.
All right. Shall we close the public hearing? Do I have a motion?
Did we settle on a number yet?
Three, three?
Three? Do I have a motion to close? Three employee. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to.
What happens to the other three employees? Where do they park?
They're so fired.
They're parking on top of their other cars.
Yeah.
That's, that's an option.
I'm going to second that motion.
All those, and let's have a roll call to close public hearing.
Commissioner Boswell?
No.
Commissioner Goddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazeltine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Chair Gaddis?
Yes. Motion carries. So, all right, so. Yep, go ahead.
All right, I have to read something, don't I? Oh, here it is. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion approving an exemption declaration, granting and granting the request for an amendment to the conditional use permit, and approving a coastal development permit to allow the expansion of a veterinary clinic animal hospital within an existing commercial building on property located in the C2 Zone at 701 South Pacific Coast Highway.
Subject to?
Subject to.
Your conditions.
The conditions. Which are? Here we go. No elimination on-site, off-site, no elimination off-site.
Just for clarification, employees shall not let animals eliminate off-site.
Okay, employees shall not. Okay. Three parking spaces for staff.
Shall be designated for staff, yeah.
Shall be designated for staff, thank you. Trash receptacles will not impede parking spaces. And a designated indoor elimination will, elimination.
Facility.
Facility, station must be provided.
I'll second that motion.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Boswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazeltine?
Yep.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Chair Gaddis?
Yes, so it carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. So are we going to move on to items continued from previous agendas?
You're welcome.
Do we have any?
There's none, I'm sorry. None.
None. Items for discussion prior to action.
Yes. So we have the SB 9 discussion. I'm going to move back here. Oh, you're going to, yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we're going to finish our discussion on SB 9, and then we'll be bringing this item back for a public hearing in September. We have tonight Cheryl Park with us from the City Attorney's Office and Sean Scully, our Planning Manager. Go to the next slide. So California Senate Bill 9, or SB 9, was signed into law. I'm just going to go through kind of a little bit of the history again, but not as much as we've gone through in the past. It was signed into law in September of 2021 and became effective of January 1 of 2022. SB 9 requires ministerial approval of the subdivision of single-family zone parcels into two approximately equal parcels and the development of two residential units on a lot in single-family zones or a combination of each. The new law allows local agencies to adopt objective standards to govern these types of projects, yet imposes restrictions on what agencies require, including limits to parking and setback requirements. Do note that the legislation may allow municipalities to adopt certain standards, but those are not automatically included in the state's regulations. And that is why we adopted our urgency ordinance, and we will be adopting. And that is why we adopted our urgency ordinance and we will be adopting the permanent ordinances. So the city council first discussed this back in November and December of 2021, right after the law was passed. The city council adopted an urgency ordinance, I'm not going to go through all of this, in December of 2021, and then extended that urgency ordinance based on a justification report. And they extended that on February 1st of 2022. So there was a total of two years from originally adopted that it will be effective. And so we need to look to adopt the permanent regulations. And the reason for that urgency ordinance was really looking at making sure that we're studying additional impacts of the ordinance and addressing those. The city council referred this to the Planning Commission for your consideration, including some additional topics, and we'll go through those. And, but then, and we did talk about this and initially present this to the Planning Commission a year and a half ago in February. Since then, the state has come, come out with quite a few opinions on the, on the regulations and an advisory on the implementation. So that, and those came out after the city council had given direction on those topics. Last month, I had provided a refresher and then also talked about those, that direction from HCD. And they have weighed in considerably on what municipalities can and cannot do, more so than cannot. So there are fewer options of what the city council had initially wanted to consider. In tonight's presentation, I will provide recommendations regarding those additional topics that, that you may want to look at. We'll go to the next slide. Again, SB 9 requires that cities and counties provide for ministerial approval of these, either a lot, a lot split, and this is in single-family, or two on a lot. Although it allows objective standards, those cannot physically preclude the construction of up to two units or physically preclude either of the two units from being at least 800 square feet in floor area. The bill exempts SB 9 qualifying projects from environmental review, or SEQA, and the bill exempts a local agency from being required to hold public hearings for coastal development permits on these. So next slide. For lot splits, the basic allowances and limitations, single-family has been a single-family residential zone, a maximum of two parcels. The new lots have to be approximately equal in size. The minimum new lot size has to be 1,200 square feet. So the largest, the smallest lot that you'd be able to split is a 2,400 square foot lot. No, it can't be located within historic district or landmarked historic property. The site shall not have been previously split, and each lot can have two residential units. And the next slide. So ADUs and JADUs can be counted towards the maximum number of units in, if the lot is split. Municipality must choose that, though, so we do need to have that in the ordinance. So why not just rely on what the state law is and not have an ordinance? It's because for these particular options where they say you can't, municipality can have these standards, we want to make sure that we adopt those and have them in place. Each unit can be at least 800 square feet. The rear and side setbacks can be as little as four feet. No additional setbacks are required for existing structures and no additional setbacks for structures replacing existing structures. But that new structure must be in the same size and location. Structures can be attached and the reduced, there is a reduced parking requirement. And next slide. Based on prior city council discussions, let's see, what do I have here? I have the urgency ordinance and what we have in there. We went over that before, let me see if. Yeah, okay, I'll just go through these real quick. For the urgency ordinance, this is what we, the things that we really specified in our regulations. It requires that only an individual property owner can apply for an urban lot split, not corporations. And this will be asking, we've asked the City Attorney's Office to look into further. So we'll have that before we bring the resolution to you at public hearing next month. The ordinance reiterates the limits for sites with certain circumstances, like wetlands, hazardous waste sites, flood hazard areas. That's in the SB 9 regulations, but we made sure to also duplicate it in our ordinance. The lot split are prohibited on historic properties or within historic districts. We made sure that that, we had that in the ordinance. We specify that the lot split, being split, has not been previously split and that it may not be adjacent to a parcel that has been split by the same owner or person acting in concert with the same owner. You know, we haven't seen anything from HCD on this, but we'll make sure, you know, the City Attorney's Office, just so you know, for all of, both the regulations, the ordinance as drafted, as well as any of those recommendations that the, or city, the additional items that the city council wanted to study, the City Attorney's Office will review that and will bring back what ordinance meets, you know, both what we're looking for as well as make sure that it's not in violation of SB 9. The urgency ordinance limits the lot size to the limits that SB 9 allows. We require easements with public service providers for each resulting lot. The urgency ordinance mandates that each resulting lot must adjoin the public right-of-way with minimum frontage of at least 20 feet to ensure a viable width of a home to be built and as well to have access to that site. There is a restriction on separate conveyance of dwelling units on the same lot, and that's allowed per SB 9. And the regulations specify only residential units, no short-term rentals, and an affidavit of owner occupancy. And since those regulations allow that, we have that in our ordinance. And we also acknowledge that the coastal regulations apply in full. Next slide. Here's what the urgency ordinance has for the two-unit development. So that was for lot splits. Now we're talking about for the two-unit developments. The ordinance requires, again, the individual property owner, requires only individual property owners can apply. Again, the City Attorney's Office will look at that. We require that the lot on which the two-unit project is proposed must have been legally subdivided. The ordinance sets limits for sites with certain circumstances. Again, the wetlands, hazardous waste sites, flood hazard areas. Two-unit projects are prohibited on historic properties. We have that in there as well. No more than two dwelling units of any kind may be built on a lot resulting from an urban lot split. The state allow, this is, this is an important one because the state allows a municipality to adopt that, but without it, you wouldn't be able to limit it to just the two on the, when it's an urban lot split. So you could end up having more on a lot that's been split. If the project is on a site that it was not an urban lot split, a limit of two units plus an ADU or JADU is allowed by the state law. Again, you know, we want to make sure that we have that, that limit to the two units in our regulations. Lot coverage, outdoor living space, and setbacks are to be followed to the extent feasible, such that two primary dwelling units on the lot at 800 square feet each are permitted. And this is language very specifically in SB 9. So we made sure to put that in there for all of these different standards with that caveat of the, to the extent feasible, as is written in the SB 9 regulations. The urgency ordinance requires a new tree for each new unit or a fee in lieu. And our landscaping ordinance does state that trees should be planted to shade turf, ground cover, and shrub, planting areas to reduce water evaporation. We do require planting of public trees in our new tree ordinance. So this is aligned with what our current regulations are. The ordinance similarly requires tree replacement for mature trees or a fee in lieu. And that fee in lieu is also, you know, goes along with that to the extent feasible. So if it's not feasible to do that here, it's not like, oh, you can't do this, but rather you're going to have to pay this fee in lieu. All right. The regulations limit floor area of the second unit, our regulations in the urgency ordinance, limit the floor area for the second primary unit to 800 square feet and the height of the second primary unit to 16 feet in one story. But again, our language has to the extent feasible so that it wouldn't preclude the development of the two units. So if there needs to be an adjustment, it's at least getting it as close to those standards. The city requires parking as allowed by SB 9. Each primary dwelling unit on a lot must have its own direct utility connections according to our urgency ordinance. All structures must comply with all current local building standards. Impact fees for additional primary dwelling units shall be charged and it is proportional for ADUs and JADUs as allowed by the state regulations. Our urgency ordinance requires that all other applicable standards apply to the extent that they do not conflict with state law, including applicable requirements for affordable housing. This will be applicable when inclusionary housing is adopted. And so I'm going to go into the affordable housing in the next slide when we talk about the additional things that the city council wanted you to study. We limit the separate conveyance of dwelling units on the same lot, so no condominiums. Only residential uses are allowed, no short-term rentals, and an affidavit of owner occupancy is required if formed by an urban lot split. And again, the coastal regulations apply in full for the coastal zone. So the reason for the permanent ordinance, I touched on briefly. SB 9 went into effect of January of last year. We are allowed to adopt objective standards to govern these types of projects within a very tight window of what HCD allows and what the regulations allow. This urgency ordinance will get us through to, to December 21st of this year. So we really want to get our permanent ordinances in place. And then also, the State Attorney General had issued a letter right before our last meeting advising caution regarding urgency ordinance is related to SB 9. So we really want to get these, the permanent regulations in place. Let's see where I'm at here. All right, so we talked about last, at last, the last Planning Commission meeting, the HCD fact sheet. It was a very high-level overview of the key parts of the law. It addresses some common questions. But more significantly was the HCD had issued the, their kind of findings on Temple Cities regulations, and we went over that in a lot of detail at the last meeting. It was a lot of what not to do, made a very big example of Temple City. And what they talked about was HCD's enforcement authority is regarding Housing Element Law, Housing Crisis Act, ADU law, Housing Accountability Act, rental inclusionary housing. And really, when something is in violation of one of these, they needed to, that's what they were pointing out in the Temple City letter, was that the regulation they had was going to be in violation. So, and a lot of that, if you recall, was regarding, if your regulation doesn't require of all of that type of development, you can't just require it in SB 9. So I just want us to keep that in mind. I'm not going to go through the whole Temple City thing. We went over that last meeting. We'll go to the next slide. This is what, this is the big slide. This is the one with the information you've been waiting for. These are the recommendations that the city council, there are additional topics that they wanted the Planning Commission to consider. I'm going to go through what that, what that additional topic is and kind of where we're landing with the, with the recommendations on these. Again, the City Attorney's Office will review each of these and our ordinance to make sure that the language does not run afoul of SB 9. And if there are recommendations here that we change or items in the urgency ordinance that the city attorney finds in conflict, we'll explain why those changes were made, you know, why those changes may or may not have been included in that final version of the, in the resolution at the September meeting. So the topics. The first one was acknowledge that Redondo Beach is not dominated by single-family housing, but rather has a majority of multifamily housing. So we'll add a recital to the resolution and we'll add that to the city council's ordinances. So it's really just making sure that it's out there in the public for, and on the record. The second additional topic was examine the tree planting requirement to ensure it is adequate. And our urgency ordinance requires a new tree for each new unit or fee in lieu. And as I mentioned before, the tree planting requirement matches our existing requirements. So the recommendation would be to leave this as is, no need to change that. The next, the next topic the city council wanted you to look at was incorporate applicable items from the Climate Action Plan, including requirements for cool roofs, solar panels, graywater systems, electric vehicle charging, greenhouse gas emission reduction. Our state building code has already started requiring many of these with EV and solar. And there's not a document that ties our climate action plan to our zoning right now. That said, solar, like I said, solar panels are already required per the recent revisions of the state building code. We already have the Model Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance requirements regarding landscaping. And SB 9 developments are exempt from SEQA, so I'm not sure where, how far we could go to require any kind of mitigation for greenhouse gas reduction. Again, this was a request for city council, from city council for the Planning Commission to look at, but we also didn't have like that feedback from HCD. So the concern here would be if we were only requiring, if we only add it here to SB 9 and it's not for all residential, then we will, we'll run into some issues there. So the recommendation is not to do anything right now on, when it comes to Climate Action Plan for, for SB 9. That doesn't mean in the future the city, you know, doesn't look at doing, incorporating something for all residential.
Can I ask you a real quick question? What's the process there? So how, how would we get that in our?
That would, I would say, talk, you know, talk to your city council members. Maybe, you know, reach out to some of the members of the Public Works and Sustainability Commission because that Sustainability Commission, these are the types of things that they'll be looking at.
So there, it's already, that would already be in the works as, because the city council asked that this be looked at, would that already be in the works? I mean, is that?
No, no, I think you really want to reach out, make sure that they're like, hey, this is something that you may want to study. So, you know, that, that could be, as we're looking at the resolution, is, hey, city council, we're not including anything specific to Climate Action Plan here, but this may be something you want to study to include certain requirements for all residential. You know, so that way, it's not going to, you know, raise any red flags as far as SB 9, but it is, it's very important, and I know that's a very important topic for you. So, yeah. Okay, so that's Climate Action Plan. The next was to evaluate the individual ownership requirement of, to properly address corporations. And again, the city attorney, we've already sent that over to their office to look at further. The next was to consider an option of requiring owner occupant, the owner to occupy, not just addressing the intent to occupy. Redondo Beach does have language that states intend rather than will in the urgency ordinance. The reason being is that SB 9 specifically states that, that the bill would require the applicant to sign an affidavit stating their intent to occupy. But then it goes on and prohibits a local agency from imposing. a local agency from imposing any additional owner occupancy standards on applications for those lot splits. So the language in the government code that's related to SB nine is, you know, is very clear that we can't be adding additional owner occupancy requirements. And reviewing the urgency ordinance, we do have an owner occupancy requirement for two-unit projects that were not formed by an urban lot split. And so we'll make sure the city attorney looks at that because this was very, this was very clearly about not, not imposing additional owner occupancy standards. In SB nine, it was very clearly talking about urban lot splits and not talking about the two-on-a-lot project. So we'll make sure that we really look at that on the legal side. Okay. Consider a requirement that the design is not to encroach into a required front yard setback before exhausting the option to build to the rear and side yards setbacks in order to provide two units of 800 square feet each. If there is a priority of other items first, you know, we could propose that to city, you know, this is something you could propose to city council, but I think we'd want to put that to the extent feasible and as well have the city attorney look at that. The next one was to review objective standards being considered by other similar municipalities. I think HCD's kind of done that for us. And we did bring some examples, but I think we have a lot of that direction of concerns that we, you know, we don't want to necessarily incorporate something that might be iffy, even if HCD hasn't weighed in on it, just based on their direction. And then evaluate the affordability requirement. We should tie our ordinance to whatever we adopt for inclusionary housing. At this time, the city council is considering a citywide discounted sliding scale in lieu for all projects of two units and above, and this would require them to provide that in lieu payment if that ends up being adopted. So the recommendation would be remove the affordable rent requirement, oh, whoop, the affordable rent requirement and revise to state along the lines of all applicable affordable housing standards shall apply to the extent these standards do not conflict with state law. So it would be the same affordable requirement as other developments, and then this would become applicable when inclusionary housing is adopted. Okay, next slide. And so tonight we were just discussing this. I, you know, provided those recommendations. In September, Planning Commission, you guys will have a public hearing and a resolution on the final, making any recommendations on the final ordinances, both inland and coastal. And then we're looking at October, November for a city council public hearing to introduce the ordinances and then adoption, November, December with that December 21st date. I think it's probably going to be more of November, just so we can make sure they're effective by the time our urgency ordinance is expired. If you want to go back to the prior slide, because I think that's going to be maybe where you might want to talk about anything. With that, I complete my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandy.
Is there, should we just have a discussion?
Opening up, like, if you guys want to discuss these, I mean.
Well, it's certainly annoying.
And let me just, before, excuse me, before I conclude my presentation, I am the messenger.
How dare you subject us to this?
I have a question.
All right.
What do we have, what do we know about the health and safety? That came up in a lot of the various city stuff. So what can we do there?
We actually have, we actually have in our regulations, there's, what you can do is if the building official, for the municipality finds that there's a violation of health and safety with that, we do have that in our urgency ordinance. It is something where you're allowed to, you know, that could justify a denial, but there's a lot that they have to justify in that. So it's not something where we as, as non-building officials could say, oh, that seems to be unsafe or, you know, or that seems to be, you know, violating some kind of health code. It would have to be found by the chief building official.
Okay.
And again, it's, every new development is subject to, so it's equivalent, yeah.
Yeah. But it was a call out that the regulations, the legislation in SB nine very, very much said that a municipality could do that. So we wanted to make sure it was included, I mean, have that in our ordinance. So we wanted to make sure we had it in the code.
What do you think they meant by that? Health and safety?
It's, it's really going to be called out. It's going to need to be, I would say, some kind of a building.
You know, the general language is health, safety, and welfare. And those are, that's a pretty high bar, but when you just limit it to health and safety, that's a very high bar. So it's, they're really making it difficult to make a finding of that level to deny one of these projects.
What would that be, Sean? Just for a novice here.
I can't, I can't.
That's why we're not the chief building officials.
None.
Low doorways, hit your head.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're talking about new construction, yeah, if you have something where it's, it's, you know, and a lot of that's going to, like, they're going to build to the code anyway, but, you know, if something didn't allow for accessibility, if it didn't allow for, you know, certain things for that, that, that safety.
And it might be.
Yeah.
As another example, some of my years as a county planner, we dealt with large open areas, very challenged topographically. So there would be too steep of a driveway to access for the fire department.
Okay.
So adding an additional unit in, under those circumstances would be a safety issue.
Yeah, like you can't put a house there because the hill they'd have to climb is too steep, so that would never work, kind of thing. Okay, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, actually, we might have that. We might have a steep hill in Redondo.
I think the whole city should be a historical district.
There you go.
I think all building has to be ADA compliant. Okay.
I do, but.
You do. Well, no, please.
So I have, let's see, I have five questions. State law, question number one. State law allows architectural consistency between the main dwelling and an addition or a new structure? Two question, add to that. Is this correct? It's what I learned from looking at some of the other municipalities. And second is, do you support that? The staff, you support that? Allowing architectural or establishing that architectural consistency between the main building and the addition or new structure? You could add that. State law apparently allows you to do that.
Well, look at that, yeah.
To require consistency between the two units.
The two units.
Architectural.
That kind of makes sense.
Architectural consistency.
At least they allow that.
And do our two-in-a-lots have that kind of requirement, right?
Yeah, it'd be for the multiple units on a single lot.
Yeah, so if you have a craftsman up front, you got to put a craftsman in the back. That kind of makes sense. A lot of sense.
Okay.
Okay.
State law provides that objective design standards specific for SB nine projects can be applied. Is that correct? And does staff support it?
I think that goes to that to the extent feasible. For those, you know, to, in order to provide two units of 800 square feet each, yeah.
It's sort of similar to the one, the first one, architectural consistency, but.
Yeah, I think.
Would that be something that would be valuable to put in?
It depends on what that standard is and is that standard something that's required in other residential? I mean, HCD very clearly weighed in about.
Right.
Requiring something here that's not required of other single-family residential.
So should this be included?
So all of these questions are.
The architectural consistency? I mean, that's, you.
So my question here is, the council has asked us to add anything more, right? They said, if you have anything more to add. So that's my question here. This is, state law says the architectural consistency can be, allows that architectural consistency. So the question is, should we add that?
Yeah, you know, let's think about this. In a standard, single-family, there wouldn't be another unit except for an ADU, and we can't require it of the ADU. So it would only be of the second unit, the second primary unit.
Right, and if we don't, and if we don't require it with the ADU, then it's likely we couldn't require it for this. Is that correct?
Well, if we built a two-on-a-lot, is it required?
Right, right.
We'll have, we'll have to look at it. I mean, I don't think, so here's the thing. If somebody chose to do the primary unit and an ADU, you couldn't require that ADU to have that architectural consistency. If somebody did two primary units and one of them was not an ADU, that's a possibility, but we'll have to make sure that we'll look at it.
So you're going to look at it?
Yeah, and if, if that's something we could, you know, legally include, we'll have that in there.
You'll make that recommendation. Okay. And what about this one? Objective design standards specifics, specific for SB nine projects? Is that worth looking at?
So under the specific section with respect to the two-on-a-lot, if you look at subsection B, and I know you don't have the actual wording of the statute in front of you, although I think it is an attachment, B subsection to A, it says, "The local agency shall not impose objective zoning standards, objective subdivision standards, and objective design standards that would have the effect of physically precluding the construction of up to two units or that will physically preclude either of the two units from being at least 800 square feet in floor area." So you can have those standards. You just have to be careful that you're not going to preclude the actual construction of the two units.
Right.
So there, it is allowed, it is permitted, but there are parameters on those standards that can be imposed.
Right, right. And.
So Director Brandy is correct. You just have to be careful as to what standards that you're going to include in the ordinance.
Right. And how do you, then there's the other clause that says you have to, you can't apply any standard to the new that you don't already apply to the rest of the city.
Yeah, that was in that Temple City, their Temple City letter. And, and, yeah, so that, you know, therein lies that, yeah. So if you're going to, I think that, that this architectural consistency between the primary units on a single lot, well, there's never going to be two primary units on a normal, single-family lot, so you wouldn't have that, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, restricting, like, you're choosing what your architectural is. So I think that we'll still look at that for the, you know, for legal, see if there's any other interpretations that have come out on, in other municipalities on that. But it would have to be something where it wouldn't make sense, you would never have that restriction on a single family because it's only one unit, you know what I mean? Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I'll move on. I'll just strike that number two. Okay, in cases where the applicant cannot construct at least 800 square feet urban dwelling, and I think you know what I'm talking about here, that this idea that you could, oh, okay, so the applicant may remove development standards in a prescribed order. Has staff determined what that order is? You had mentioned that you would want the rear setback to be the last, I think it was the, was it, oh, no, it's the front setback.
What I mentioned was the city council's additional topic was to consider a requirement that the design is not to encroach into a required front setback before exhausting the option to build to the rear and side setbacks in order to provide the two units of 800 square feet. What, what my recommendation was, was, I'm just looking at the presentation, is that this, you know, if you're adding that, add that same language to the extent feasible.
Just add.
Yeah, right.
But you haven't, but you haven't determined yet what the, what the order would be.
Well, and it's not for us to determine, like, we're not prioritizing. This was one where the city council said we would like to prioritize that we protect that front yard setback so that they're not like, well, let's just move everything to the front, and now we have all this big roomy backyard space that, and we didn't, you know, so they wanted, they wanted to not have something encroached in the front yard space until they've met, you know, made their way out to the four-foot side and rear yard setbacks.
Right, there is language, other municipalities use, use language that says, you know, first you will take X, then you will take Y, and then the last, the last thing that they put on there is, is take the front setback.
So we'll add that next month, Sheila. That's when we have a public.
Well, this is where you're given the direction for what we're putting into that resolution.
So what I'm asking is.
No, we didn't prioritize.
If you, if you had done that.
That's not our, you know, we're not setting that policy direction. That's where, you know, where city count, you and you, or the city council asked you on this particular issue.
So we can clarify the wording next month.
With advisement from, wouldn't you want to advise on that? That seems like it's a planning kind of, right?
It depends on what you're, you know, like, if somebody's, if they need to meet it because of height, I'm not going to tell them, you know, and, you know, they're, they're fine, you know, if they have to meet it with height, I can't tell them, well, no, you had to meet it with, with, you know, the sides, you know, move up to the side setback before you went up in height. They might need both. It's for them to come in and it's like, they have to meet that to the extent feasible. So if they're, you know, if you're going to have that prior, that's not for us to set the prioritization, is height more important than, you know, the side setbacks?
Like, that is, right. So your suggestion is, is not to prioritize?
Yeah, I don't, because each site is going to be, I mean, we.
Okay.
Each site is going to have its own constraints that, to say, well, you needed to do this first, and it's like, well, that site doesn't, you know, doesn't have it. I think that, I think the more, this is the one where the city council found the most important thing was not to encroach in the front, because there are, the state already said, you know, you can't impose more than a four-foot side and rear yard setback. Okay, well, let's not have them now encroaching to our required front yard setback if they haven't already moved up to those side and rear that the state are allowing.
Right, but you're recommending that you don't, that you don't prioritize because it would be hard to do.
Yeah, it would be, like, we have, we have had a single application, neither of them had multiple units on a lot. I would, like, it would be really hard, we don't have, like, cases to say, this is, you know, what we're seeing and here's why you would want to, you know, make this your preference. So they're just, throughout our city, there's such a unique, you know, or so many varied sizes and shapes and slopes of properties that it would be really hard to, you know, set that priority and then get, you know, have somebody challenge it, oh, well, you made me do this first.
Okay, thank you. Number four, state law allows requirement that future owners of the urban dwelling, not the lot split, but the two-in-the-lots, disclose to the next owner the rules regarding short-term rentals. That's not in our urgency ordinance. Do you, do you think that there's any value in that?
Future owners disclose the rules.
Okay, shall I read it again?
Yeah.
State law allows a requirement that future owners of an urban dwelling to disclose to the next owner the city's rules regarding short-term rentals, owner occupancy, and affordable housing. We do not have that in the urgency ordinance. Is this of any value?
Yes.
So really, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, maybe our city attorney would want to, okay, the final one, this is the, this is the fun one. What is, okay, so FAR bonuses. What is, okay, so, FAR bonuses are allowed for SB nine. I think you said, you told us that last week. I mean, last time, last month. Okay, so what is the impact of FAR bonuses since they do apply? If the redon, if Redondo Beach required the, which it does, the maximum square footage for the second unit is 800 square feet. What will the maximum square footage be if all the bonuses apply at point eight? So, you've got a, you've got a, we're calling, right, this is the two-unit development, right? The second unit is, maximum is 800 square feet, but the bonuses apply.
The bonuses would apply to the, the, you know, so you would have, you could have the total amount of square footage plus an additional 800 square feet. So, the total amount, including the bonuses, and then an additional 800 square feet. So, you could have all of that, but, you know, that, they could, they could max out the, the first primary unit and then have an additional 800 square foot.
So, then what you're saying is then, that the bonuses do not apply to the second unit?
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, I'll write that in.
Is that in compliance with the?
Because we have to the extent feasible on that, for the 800 square foot max. It should, it, like, there, it would have to, you know, like, for us to say that they couldn't do 800 square feet, well, they'd have, we'd have to allow them to do up, that's why I'm saying that, additional 800 square feet. If you said, "Well, here's your FAR, and you can only build to this F, total FAR," you have to allow them to build that, up to an additional 800 square feet to have an 800 square foot unit.
Okay, so, let's just take, for example, let's say District Five, right? Average, I think Holly said that the average is 5,000 square feet, is that correct? Or is it 7,000?
In R1, it's a typical, yeah. That's the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet.
Okay, so, so, and then you have, it's point six five, then you get, let's say they max out, it's a two-unit project, they, they max out the point eight. So, what would that, and then they have an 800 square foot second unit. They're going four feet to the side, the back, the side and the back, right? Not the front, right? They're going four feet to the side and the back. Okay, they have no restriction on side balconies, no restriction on window placement, no second-story setbacks. What would this look like on a 5,000 square foot lot?
Well, the, the, the side or rear balcony is, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, on a primary unit could not encroach into the setbacks.
Couldn't encroach in the.
I know, like.
Into the four-foot setback?
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, on a lot of 5,000 square feet, at a point eight, how many square feet would that be for the, for the, for the main house?
4,000.
Okay, so that'd be 4,000. They could go 4,000, and they could go up to four feet to the side, right? And the rear. Except for they'd have to put, they'd have to have 800, they'd have to have some.
Room.
Room for that 800 square foot second house. Correct? Is there any, is there any requirement for space in between the first and the second house?
No, they can share a wall.
We have a requirement between.
It's five feet between structures.
But bear in mind, it will be to the extent feasible.
Yeah.
Now, that being said, the five feet is mainly for fire safety, but there are other ways that they can meet that fire safety without the, the five feet. And as a matter of fact, we couldn't require that five feet between an ADU and the main structure, just so you're aware. And, the, and, and if you really, really, really wanted to look at what would be the max.
Yeah.
Bear in mind, yeah, that, say, let's go to that 5,000 square foot lot, 4,000 is the, the point eight, right, for the, the first unit. An ADU could be up to 1,000.
Yeah, with two bedrooms.
If it had two bedrooms. So, so they, they would probably choose to do an ADU rather than a second primary unit.
Oh, right, right, right.
So, just something, something to think about.
And they.
And, and that's ADU regulations, we, you know, that, we can't even, you know, touch that with the SB nine.
Right, right, right. And windows can be anywhere, and seconds, no second-story setbacks. Right, four feet to the, so it's a 4,000 square foot house.
It's a very big house on a 5,000 square foot lot.
With an 1,000 foot, with a 1,000 foot ADU, right? That's, that's 5,000 square feet on a 5,000 square foot lot. And that's allowable, is that correct?
Per SB nine, yes.
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 Okay.
There's not a lot we can do about that one.
I know, I think, I think we're just sort of getting a sense of picture. Of what this is gonna look like.
I, I would also just, just, I, I want you to bear in mind, this has been in place for a year and a half. We have had a single application, it was only for a lot split, it was not for two on a lot. I mean, they say that, but, you know, I mean, it was a lot split with a single unit on each. We've had more ADU applications on a single family. We've had, we probably average about 60 a year now.
No, we had 60 last year.
Yeah, 60 last year. So, you know, we're already seeing that with ADUs as it is, yeah.
Okay, well.
I mean, I'm not trying to justify SB nine, I'm just letting you know.
It's just beginning, it's just beginning, right?
May, maybe, I don't know that, that market's there. I don't, people are applying more for the ADUs than, than they're focusing on doing the SB nine at this point.
Yeah, so far.
Yeah. Yes, but, but, when ADUs became available, like, when the ADU regulations went into place, people were applying for them like mad. So, it's not like they waited a year and a half and then realized that the ADU regulations were in place. They were applying right away. There's something where, this is not the municipality that, that they design, you know, this isn't the type of lot sizes that SB nine was really designed to address. You know, really, they were looking at those communities that have the acre and half-acre sites. We don't even have quarter-acre sites.
Well, I would just say, if you go on the YIMBY site, they're promoting this on 5,000 square foot lots. They have architectural designs for them, and they're encouraging developers to come in and buy the lots and, and, and build SB nine projects. So, what, like you say, whether that happens or not, but it's, it's, it sort of takes your breath away.
Yeah. I think that's where we were looking at, I think if I had it on here, or if it was on the prior, let me look at my notes. That, if you remember, we had, we were talking about owner occupancy, right? Let me find that note. So, that's what we wanna look at was, Redondo Beach has language, the state's intent, that was on the urban lot split. So, if it's split, they have to sign the affidavit that they intend to live in one of them. That, there's not a lot of teeth there. But what we were looking at was then having, is, you know, we have in our urgency ordinance that owner occupancy requirement, if it's a two-unit project where it was not formed by an urban lot split. So, we'll have to look at that legally. So, just, you know, keeping that in mind.
Yeah.
It's like, that's great to encourage that, but then there's, you know, there, if it's just, if it's not splitting the lot, and it really is just putting multiple units on a single lot, which it sounds like that's what they're designing, we may have something, and we'll bring that, let you know next month.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
Someone did their homework.
Yes, Sheila's been really, really great at researching this. I appreciate Commissioner Lamb, everything that you've done on this.
Was this slide in the packet?
No, I'll make sure to circulate this around to you.
I, I'm looking at it, I'm like, I, I don't remember seeing this.
This is the new presentation for tonight, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I finished this about.
About an hour ago.
Four o'clock this afternoon.
All right. Do we take public comment on this discussion? Should we do that? Do we have some public comment, Wayne Craig? Oh, sorry.
Not him, not him. Hi, well, my name's Wayne Craig, resident of District One, Kedu New Park Financing Commission, Mr. Chairman. One thing I was gonna comment on, kind of interesting, was about the option to require owner to address their intent to occupy. While SB nine may say that, oh, you can't, can't require that, we actually already have a mechanism that does require that. Anyone who is building this and securing financing has to disclose that to the lender in order to get an interest rate and terms and such. So, they have to declare that they are actually, actually occupying that. If they don't, it's considered lender fraud, and the bank can then go back and force that person to refinance the property under the terms that would be probably more of a higher risk and a higher interest rate, because it wouldn't be owner-occupied. Maybe you might wanna think about an angle of, a person who's applying for this can, has to supply a copy of the actual grant deed or mortgage document that, that states they are intending to occupy it. And then if they don't later on, you just call the bank and say, "Guess what?" And again, anyway, it's just kind of an interesting thing. So, there is a mechanism, you know, SB nine says you can't, thanks for requiring it. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. I thought that might be an interesting angle to pursue.
Thank you. Any other public comment here or online, or?
We don't have any public comments at this time.
Nope, okay, all right. All right, there we go. Commissioner Hazleton, you have it?
She was, she was pointing to the cloud.
Oh, where's she go? Okay, okay, all right. Any other comments, questions?
No. If a citizen speaker a moment ago, if I could get a clarification, so, you don't need to come up. So, SB nine says you can't require an owner to occupy, but banks require the owner to occupy to get the best financing.
Not every, not everybody gets financing.
Well, not everybody's financing. Okay, so that's, that's the caveat, okay. So, if somebody, if, if, if somebody is doing this, and they don't intend to occupy, they have to be upfront about that with the bank, and SB nine doesn't care one way or the other. Does that understand that correctly?
SB nine, SB nine tells you what, that, it says that the applicant, it requires an applicant, that, like, the SB nine regulations actually requires an applicant to sign an affidavit stating that they intend to occupy one of the housing units as their principal residence for a minimum of three years from the date of the approval of the urban lot split.
So, they have to intend, but it doesn't say they have to actually do it?
Correct. But then the bill goes on to say, it goes on to prohibit a local agency from imposing any additional owner occupancy standards on applicants.
Okay.
So, that's what the statute says with respect to the lot splits. They don't have that same requirement in the regulation or the statute regarding two on a lot. And so, that's something that, i- in reviewing this, and we'll have more of a definitive legal interpretation for you next month, but I was working with outside counsel on this, who's an expert in the field, and she said that a bullet point that was in Brandy's presentation that the council requested that we look at is a little problematic with respect to the two-unit statute, because it is in the lot split statute, it is not in the two-on-a-lot statute. So, it gave her pause that it is in our urgency ordinance, because we might not have sufficient legal grounds to require that.
So, if they're not splitting the lot, it's a moot point anyway. And if they are splitting the lot, then.
We can only require that they sign an affidavit that they intend to occupy.
But there's no enforcement of them actually occupying it.
Correct. And in fact, it's, it goes on to state, as Director Forbes said, "We can't actually impose any further restrictions." And I think they were actually envisioning municipalities requiring that applicant owner to actually live there. So, I don't know why they did that, but that is what is the plain language of the statute.
They, they probably wanna open up these new units to the widest potential market and not limit it by ma- making an owner live there. So, I understand that, that's in keeping with the, the whole overdeveloped California scheme. So, so hopefully, people that do this will think they have to, that they have to actually occupy it, when in fact, they just have to say that they will and reneg on that.
Yeah, let's hope developers don't have lawyers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure developers are, are gonna be.
Fingers crossed.
Are gonna be onto this right away. But some guy down the street that says, "Hey, I'm gonna do that," you know, might, might think he still has to live there, wherein in fact, he could actually rent both units on, all four units out.
It, it would be interesting to, to see if there's anything you could do if somebody signed an affidavit for multiple applications. Now, that would be interesting, like, if there's any, anything that the city could do to challenge that.
Yeah.
Gotta live part-time everywhere. And then what was the, kind of losing, losing my focus on what, what all's been said so far, and we aren't even that far into it. On the continuity of the units, if they split the lot, they're supposed to build two units that are pretty much the same architectural style.
It wasn't necessarily if they, no, if they split the lot, they can do whatever on each of those lots.
No, I mean, so if they split the lot, there's, there's two lots, and they build two units on one lot.
That's, that's what we're gonna look into. That was Commissioner Lamb's suggestion about the architectural consistency between primary units on, on the, a single lot. So, we'll look into that.
Can somebody split the lot, build two units on this one, and only one unit on that one, and leave the second split unit as just like park space?
If they wanted to.
Not put a house on it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so they don't have to build four units?
No. And, and that, that goes to the example of, we've had a lot split, they each, they chose to, on each lot, only build one unit.
Okay, so they.
So, there's nothing requiring anybody to have to build.
Okay.
Two on a lot.
They can, they can take advantage of this to split a lot and then build up to two units on it?
On each.
On each.
Yeah.
And if, and I guess in the example before, if I'm not confusing two, two different things here, one can be a very large house, and one can be a very large ADU. Was that on a single lot?
Yeah, that's on a single lot.
That would be for a single, okay, so for a single lot. And that, in the example, you had the ADU was 1,000 square feet?
Now, now, bear in mind.
How does that, how does that become an ADU?
You would have to have a 10,000 square foot lot to split it, have a 5,000 square foot lot. Now, your example was if somebody just wanted to do two on a lot, on a 5,000 square foot lot.
Correct, right, correct. And they could, and they could do that.
They could. But they can do that right now.
If it's an SB, if they have the SB nine.
They can do that right now, they could do that right now with an ADU.
And they can do that right now.
Yeah.
But not with the four foot. They don't.
ADU's four foot, yeah.
But the four foot for the SB nine is the side and the back. Is that the same for ADU?
Yes. And just, just bear in mind, with, with SB nine. Um, and just, just bear in mind, with, with SB9, if you didn't split the lot, you could build two primary units, an ADU and a J-ADU in one of those.
Right.
So that's the point, is like, for your example of that 5,000 square foot lot, they could build technically four dwelling units, they could build two primary units, an ADU and a J-ADU within one of the primary.
Right, right. There is a visual, um, Long Beach has a, has a visual where it, actually you can see it, it makes more sense, you can sort of picture it in your head. Anyway, now just leave it at that.
But right, but, but to the point of the 5,000 square foot and 1,000 ADU, they could do that, what they could do is 5,000 square, or, excuse me, 4,000 square foot, um, the thousand, main house, an 800 square foot secondary house, you know, the other primary house, 1,000 square foot ADU, and within either that 800 or that, um, 4,000 square foot primary unit, they could put in a J-ADU in there. But it would have to be within this existing square footage.
And could they, could they make the, uh, ADU, uh, in which the SB9 or the, um, the standard ADU, which could be, um, a second story?
Um, only if it's attached or for the 800 square foot, to the extent feasible.
Nothing else is feasible.
Single story, to the extent feasible. So if you had all of that on that lot and the only way they're gonna get that 800 square feet is for them to go up, they would, you'd have to allow them to go up.
Right, right. Can you allow them to have a, a basement?
Yeah. Cause that doesn't count as a story and it's with, it would still remain within the height.
They could have a basement and two stories.
Oh, I'll, I mean, to 800 square feet.
Does the basement count as part of the square footage?
It depends.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not clear.
I don't necessarily want to go into that whole definition.
Basement and 800 square feet on top of it, right?
Finish grade.
Yeah, of course.
Then it'll...
Right.
Not be counted.
But if it doesn't count as a story, you could have a basement 800 square feet above the basement.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And a basement would have to be low ground level in its entirety.
Yeah, that, that's the one requirement.
We'll have to look at that with the... You're talking about that for the secondary unit, yeah.
Well, that's, that's where the whole thing about the square footage, that's above grade and below grade.
Okay.
Anything else that we want to ask?
Yeah, tons of stuff.
You could go all night.
So if you, if you split the lot under SB9, you cannot then take one of those and split it again.
Correct.
What if the lot had been split decades ago?
No.
So it's, if the lot has ever been split for any reason in any time going back to Native American habitation.
Documentation of lot splits.
So if, if the lot had been split before, it doesn't matter if it was done under SB9 or if it was just done at some previous time. Once it's split, it can't be split again.
I think, I think Cheryl might be verifying that.
I, I think the parcel cannot have been split through a prior SB9 lot split. So if it was split previously through a different process, then I think...
Different subdivision.
Yeah, then you can, you can only get one SB9 lot split.
Right, and that's, that's the important point. Like, if it's, if it was, if it was split before, it would have been subdivided, it would, it would have been through a subdivision and it would have had to have, um, had the minimum lot size requirements. So, and to do an urban lot split, so say it was something that had been subdivided previously, it has to, to be at least 2,400 square feet.
Right.
To do an urban lot split.
The lot, it's, the lot, not the house. The lot has to be at least 2,400 square feet, which is not that big, I guess. Because, you know, when I used to live in Hermosa Beach back in the early 80s, I lived in a, in a, in a house that was the front part of what had been a bigger lot. Not only did the two units not look anything alike architecturally, but that was done back in the 60s. So if that lot were to be big enough and in Redondo, or even in Hermosa, I guess, it's SB9, it's all state, they could then tear down that front house, split the lot again under SB9 now.
Yeah, if it's 2,400 square feet, yeah.
If each, no, the, the lot to be split has to be 2,400 or the resulting lots?
The, no, the lot to be split have to be 24, has to be 2,400. The resulting lots have to be, are a minimum of 1,200 and that's where you get, yeah. And they have to be a relative equal size.
Okay, so a previously split lot can still be split as long as it wasn't done, done under SB9?
Right, and it meets the other standards, yeah.
It's all the other requirements, of course, okay.
All right, I have a question. Doug, you're at 10 minutes, so, um, so what's our path?
Van Hensley gifted me all his time.
Thank you. So, uh, what's, uh, our path going forward is sort of, uh, some suggestions have come up, there, there are some questions to be answered from a legal standpoint, uh, and then, uh, next meeting that we discuss this, we're going to, ah, there we go, uh, we're going to adopt a resolution to send it to council, basically, and that's our next meeting on this.
And that will be the, it'll have, that, um, resolution will have in it the, the language for the ordinances.
Right.
Based on the legal review, based on the feedback, um, provided tonight, um, and the recommendations that I had in there. So we'll, um, we'll bring that back to you and now it's like, now we're moving it on to the city council.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
So whatever verbiage we come up with, they will then look at and make their decisions accordingly.
Yeah.
So we could move to make this, our text very confusing.
Are there any other public comments, anything like that?
No. We had, we do not have any public comments at this time.
Lost our audience. Um, okay, so let's move on to items from staff.
Um, items from staff. It's been a little bit busy, so I don't have anything additional from you.
Commission items and referrals to staff.
Question. Okay, um, in the resolution for the, um, for the veterinary, the expansion of the veterinary and in other res- resolutions, it says that the, uh, the publication was announcing the information was in the easy reader. Now, easy reader comes to residents once a month, so using the easy reader is against the law, actually, because the law requires that, um, uh, that it be available to the residents or delivered to the residents once a week.
It's, um, it, it's, we get it, we send it to the city clerk, so whatever the, the legal publication is that the city utilizes, that's where that, what that publication is. So it, whatever it is, it's, it's not necessarily that it's sent to you, it's, if it's published, if, if that, um, if that publication is, has an issue each week, that it has to be a weekly.
Does it have to be, uh, uh, okay, so it may go out online, but I don't think it goes out.
It's printed weekly.
It's printed weekly, it's only, only I think one of the monthly issues is mailed to everybody. So it's, it just needs to be in, in a, a publication that's, um, printed weekly.
Okay, so I have a question then. My question is, is that the right policy to do effective outreach to our community? And I'm hearing you say, well, this is just something that we do to the city clerk, so where would we take this from here?
We, we have legal requirements for publications of public hearings. A, a public hearing is very specific, and so with that, it's a published, um, it's a posting, um, and, and so that's where we have, if, if there's something, we're not going, we're not going out extra like, um, promoting a project or, or, you know, for something that's for review, we are meeting what the legal requirements are, because if we did that for one and say we didn't for another, or hey, we forgot to email these people, it's not, that's not the legal publications. Here are the legal public, here are the legal ways that, of notifying, and that's what we want, we have to meet and we need to meet.
Okay, so if, if, because, uh, because the Beach Reporter comes to residents every week and the Beach Reporter is used by Manhattan Beach to, um, and I believe Hermosa Beach, to publicize, um, public hearings, um, what would, uh, uh, what would the recommendation be from, from the planning commission to change?
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to make, talk to your, to the city council, because I think they establish, or is it the clerk's office? I'm not sure if it's the clerk's office or the city council establishes each year what their official publication will be. We, we don't set it, we, we're not like, hey, this sounds, like, it's something established at that, either the city clerk or city council, yeah.
Okay, so I'm bringing it up because this is the venue where the public hearings are.
Right, so maybe Eleanor doesn't know that it only comes out once a month and we would need to bring it to her attention, or every three weeks or whatever.
Right.
The Beach Reporter might be more effective.
Right.
Yeah, but the Beach Reporter doesn't come out regularly. I haven't had a Beach Reporter since June.
Yeah, I haven't had a...
I haven't had an easy reader in three or four years.
I don't think I'd get a Beach Reporter.
I think that that's a very good point.
The point being is, it's not about where, who, who gets it for free when, it's about it being published. If it's published in those, you know, those, if those publications run in a weekly manner, that's what it needs to be. I, I'm, I'm not the person to tell you one way or the other, like, I am just, I'm just the messenger.
As long as they publish it once a week.
Email address, right.
It doesn't come due...
Very good.
And I want to thank you so much. I'm not, I'm, I'm bringing it up because public hearings are important to the community.
Yes, absolutely.
And I understand that it's not, uh, you fulfill your obligation, right? So it's some other department that must be contacted.
Yes.
In regard to this.
In regard to the, yeah, which publication, yes.
Okay.
Oh, we have a public comment. Somebody's out there.
Go ahead, Holly.
Holly!
Holly, it's best. We missed you.
We can't hear you, there we go.
I just wanted to tell you, this is Holly Osborne, when you said we lost our audience, you didn't lose me, I just wasn't asking questions, I was listening.
Okay, well, we're, we'll, we'll all, we'll keep in mind, we'll assume you're out there.
Rob stands corrected.
I stand corrected on that. Thank you, Holly.
We have one person listening.
A very important person.
We got two more. Oh, right. Yeah.
They're not listening, though.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other commission, uh, commission items and referrals to staff?
No.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against say no.
Thank you.
It's unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Forbes.